We do have six council members present, so and it is, I believe, just after seven o'clock. So I will call the meeting of the common council of the city of Platteville order. It's Tuesday, November twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty, and we are hosting this meeting via Zoom. And I believe that Adam, it appears either Adam or Jody, or perhaps both, are in the council chambers. I do know that we have several people tonight who are likely here for class. I had at least one person contact me before the meeting to tell me that he would be attending for class. So if you are attending for class, I would ask that you tell me that in the chat. So that when we get to citizens, comments, observations, and petitions, I likely will not then call on you. I also see that there are several people here tonight that I know have been attending and are interested in the item, first action item about pickleball. And so it's usual that when we get to that item in the agenda, then we would allow people to talk about that agenda item if they so choose. So Colette, I understand that you are our recorder tonight, so we will start with roll call.
Okay, Josh?
Yes, I'm here.
Klein? Shanley?
Yes.
Arts?
Here.
Cop?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
And Killian?
Here.
Okay, and I have not heard back from Robin. I can only hope that if she is on the road in tonight's fog and other weather, that she is doing well. Often, she's on the road at this time. The first item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing. It is the hearing for the two thousand and twenty-one budget. We have been working on this budget, I believe, since July or August. So this is not the first time we've talked about this budget. And so I believe the person I turn this over to is Eda and Nicola. I don't know who's taking the lead here.
I will start first, and then I'll let Nicola and I answer any questions or concerns as we go there. So I will share my screen. Okay, so obviously, this is the two thousand and twenty-one city draft operating budget public hearing presentation. So obviously, for council members, you've heard this presentation a couple of times, and so have staff. But this is kind of the last opportunity to talk about where things are kind of at with the current budget and then walk through any kind of concerns or questions that still may be lingering. So obviously, one of the things we wanted to do with this budget was kind of establish a quota or a goal with any budget that we work on. So this particular one is from Alexa Von Toll, which is a good financial plan, is a roadmap that shows us exactly how the choices we make today will affect our future. So just kind of recapping, as kind of Barb indicated, we've gone through multiple meetings and kind of sessions and work sessions and discussions in regards to the budget. And currently, right now, we are on Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, going over the public hearing for the budget and then also talking about the capital improvement plan. So overall, kind of tonight with the budget presentation, some of the things we kind of want to summarize are obviously some of the budget basics that go into the budget, looking at the financial outlook and considerations that went into kind of the five-year financial plan that we have, as well as this budget. Specifically, go into the two thousand and twenty-one city budget initiatives that were kind of tasked with dealing with this budget, going over some of the increases and decreases that occurred in expenditures and revenue, briefly going over kind of the city budget summary, talking about the capital improvement plan, and then finally summarizing, when you put everything together, where does that put the city tax impact for this particular budget? So again, just quickly going over budget basics. So obviously, the city has to create a budget where revenues equal expenditures. So our revenues consist typically of borrowing, state aids, feeds, and taxes that are applied. And then the expenditures are obviously our operating expenses to do the day-to-day operations, our capital spending, that's our CIP, many debt payments we have to make on any of those capital purchases or projects, and then any TID shortfalls that may occur. So one of the things obviously to talk about is kind of the basics with taxes. So right now, the current city of Platteville tax rate is at seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. So as you can see here, for every kind of half a percent that you would increase the tax rate, equates to an additional tax that it generates. So for every one percent of tax rate increase, that essentially would equate to eight cents, which is about forty-six thousand dollars. And then it kind of goes through and explains what would happen if you went higher than that. So again, just talking about the budget basics. So with expenditures, there's the operating budget, which is the basic cost to run the day-to-day operations of the city. There's our CIP or capital improvement planning, which is the one-time cost for large capital items, which are predictable. And then some others are kind of one-time projects that we're working on. Debt service is obviously the repayment of our loans, which are generally from, are used to fund expenses, long-lasting capital projects. And then also the TIF districts, obviously, are where revenues are less than expenses, then the shortfall may be needed to recover. So that's where if the increment coming in for those districts does not equal the expenditures, then the general fund then has to come in, or the operating budget has to come in and supplement those TIF districts. So again, just talking about operating revenue, the general rule that the city tries to follow is one-time revenue should not be used to balance the operating budget. So really, there's two options to balance the budget. You either have to increase revenue, or you have to decrease expenses. And then it just talks about kind of some personal equivalents, where again, you know, your monthly pay must cover your ongoing personal expenses, utilities, foods, clothes, et cetera. And using one-time revenue to balance your budget is like winning, you know, five hundred dollars in the lottery and then leasing a car with a monthly payment of five hundred dollars. You can cover the expense for one month, but you'll not be able to cover the expense next month unless you win the lottery again. So then just briefly talking about our debt service. The city borrows money to pay for large life capital projects such as streets. The length of loan should not extend beyond the useful life of the item for which the funds were borrowed. Payments on loans represent the city's debt service. So there are caps in the amount the city can borrow, which exists. The state has a five percent cap of equalized value, and our city policy actually is a bit more restrictive, where we only allow three point five percent of our equalized value. So what you can see here is kind of the financial figure. So in two thousand and twenty, our equalized value was seven hundred and twenty-six million, one hundred thousand, three hundred dollars. So our state borrowing limit then, roughly at five percent, equates to about thirty-six million dollars. And overall, the principal outstanding in two thousand and twenty was about twenty million, twenty point five million. So we currently, as a city, are about fifty-six point six percent of what is the allowable state cap for debt to have. And then with our city policy, we actually, you know, try to reduce that number even further. So we have a three point five percent cap, which comes to about twenty-five million. So the principal outstanding in two thousand and twenty, again, was about twenty point five. So our cap right now, we're about eighty point eight six percent of a debt that we are allowed to take on in any given year. So then just kind of going into our CIP funding, specifically what makes that up. There's a couple of different sources that make up our CIP funding. Some of it is transfers from the general fund or extra reserves that can cover CIP spending, carryovers from previous years. So if there was a project that wasn't completed due to weather or due to some type of circumstances, that can be carried over to the following CIP year to cover additional projects. Typically, there is short-term borrowing. This is not typical and a sign of financial stress. So again, this is something that we only do really in difficult situations or on a one-off. Then there's base reserves, which may impact the bond rating. So again, you have to maintain a one thousand dollar balance in your savings account to cover the expenses. So you use this part of the one thousand dollars to pay for your new roof or riding lawnmower. So that can have an impact on CIP and spending. And then typically, what's done with our CIP is the majority of it is used for long-term borrowing, which is mainly for streets and in some specific building improvement projects that are done throughout the city. So taking out a loan for a higher-cost expense that is expected to last a long time, such as the house, it's important to have the income in your budget to cover the loan payments. So that's something we always consider when we look at our budget. So again, for CIP needs, our best estimate is the city conservatively has available approximately six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to spend on predictable CIP items this year. These items can include vehicle replacement, equipment replacement, building repair, park improvements, and sidewalk repair. In addition, the city has typically borrowed from one to two million dollars for street reconstruction annually. And under the current long-range financial plan, the city has limited the borrowing to the amount being retired each year. With this budget, there is a bit of a difference that is going to be occurring or that is being recommended. And that's the city council has authorized city staff to allow for an exceedance of this policy guidance to address really three projects. One is the Business Highway one fifty-one project, Dewey Street road replacement, which is our normal road replacement plan, and then the repair of a Deborah Court storm sewer. And we'll get into some more specifics with those numbers when we get to the CIP section. So again, just to talk briefly about our TIF districts. So our TIF districts are separate funds that have their own revenue and expense. So obviously, if the revenue exceeds expenses, the amount goes into a fund balance for that particular TIF district for future expenses. And then depending on the success accessibility of that TIF district, they may be able to close early and the created tax bases then added to the rest of the city. As we talked about earlier, if the expenses exceed revenues and there isn't fund balance or savings, the general fund then has to be utilized to cover that shortfall. So again, the personal equivalent to kind of think about with TIF districts is that if you own several small businesses, if your revenue exceeds expenses, you can reinvest the money in those businesses, and then down the road, you'll see the business and make a profit. Or if the business can't pay their expenses, you then, as the owner, must pay from your personal account in order to account for that. So then some of the financial kind of outlooks and considerations that went into not only this budget, but also our kind of five-year financial plan that we do every year, is we using projections for operational needs, anticipated borrowing and CIP spending. The long-range financial plan provides kind of a look at the financial factors influencing the next five years. So number one, obviously, concern is the, we continue to see obviously an increase in operational expenses that are expected to outpace net new construction. So what we saw this year is our net new construction this year was point two-three percent. And you know, one of the questions that I've been asking and kind of have observed is the fact that, you know, with the school district and the county, you know, their particular budgets are showing reductions, whereas the city is potentially looking at an increase. And some of that has to do directly with net new construction. So if you look at the fact that the city's net new construction was point two-three percent, that equated to about one point six million dollars in growth. Whereas if you look at the school districts and also in the towns, when you combine these two, that's almost six million dollars that the school districts saw in growth, whereas the county also saw twenty-seven million. So that's something to take into consideration, that obviously, as taxpayers, we're not seeing, you know, where we're seeing the benefit of growth outside of the city is that impacts the school district and allows them to reduce, obviously, their levy. Whereas the city may not see that, but with these towns and other areas, they're still utilizing city services. So they're utilizing parks, they're utilizing the streets, they're utilizing the library, the museum. But not necessarily, that's coming out of their taxes. That's still being, you know, distributed to taxpayers in the city. So that's something that we continue to kind of monitor, obviously, on a yearly basis. And it's something that we will continue to look at. With COVID nineteen, obviously, there was impacts on revenue sources. So that impacted the city, the county, and the state. And that's something that we continue to look at in the future years, is how that will occur. And continually, we look at without future development. It's anticipated that TID number six is going to require levy support in the future. Some of the other things we continue to try to do within our five-year CIP, five-year kind of financial plan, is looking at sustaining seven hundred thousand dollars of annual levy support for CIP. And again, this requires some use of reserves. And if not, then we have to consider the fact that we may not be able to stay at that seven hundred thousand dollar level. With TID six and citywide growth or increases in state funding, obviously, would help the above and then also would help the general financial stability of the city. And one of the things we're obviously looking in our five-year kind of financial plan is the funding that would be needed for either a new or updated fire facility will need to continue to be monitored with debt service requirements to ensure that we're meeting those stipulations and percentages that we have. So obviously, with the two thousand and twenty-one budget, there are certain drivers that we always look at with every budget and every year. And a lot of that has to do with obviously operating expenses, which is salaries, benefits, state mandates that we have to follow, elections, and then many contracts that we see increases in. Revenues obviously can have an impact either way, where we could see either an increase in state aids, which we have not seen recently. So that continues to be an issue, where we're seeing reductions in some of our state aids, hotel tax, and then revenue obviously related to new development. And then other things we continue to look at, obviously, is debt service, making sure that, you know, we're able to maintain the principal and interest payments that need to be done for the city, any TID support that may be needed throughout the TIDS and also with the general fund, and then ensuring that we continue to, you know, have expenditures that allow us to stay in the expenditure restraint. So that is something that we get, obviously, through the state, and it's something that we don't want to lose. So we do have to continue to monitor and ensure that we are operating with expenses that allow us to get that revenue source. So throughout this process, obviously, starting in June and July, and then going basically including today, these are some of the initiatives that this budget, you know, specifically tried to look at. And one of them was the funding to move the communication specialist from a thirty-hour-per-week position to full-time to address strategic planning marketing goals. One of the main things we heard out of the strategic plan that we got feedback on was that there really was a ask for more emphasis to tell a better story of Platteville and really kind of market Platteville in regards to not only the services that we have, but the history and also looking at historicals, as well as looking at new marketing opportunities. So with that came the discussion of having the communication specialist be able to address some of that by moving that position full-time. Another one was the look of creation of a human resource specialist position to assist the city manager, administration director, and finance departments with personnel matters. This is something, obviously, as part of my onboarding now, with being here eleven months and noticing some of the trends and potential impacts that could be done to make the city, obviously, more successful and allow for kind of department directors and its staff to spend more time on strategic planning and also budgetative initiatives. That was where, in the feedback I got from city staff, was looking at the creation of this position to help with reviewing some of the human resource responsibilities and then allowing some other areas and departments to be able to truly kind of dig further into their specific department goals and needs. The other thing was fifteen thousand dollars was added to the museum seasonal line item to address, again, another strategic planning goal, where specifically our museum was targeted as an area that residents and also kind of staff and the council. The feedback we received in the strategic plan was to look at finding ways to create more programming and also create more marketing for the museum. So that's where that particular dollar amount was allocated to allow for the executive director to work with staff to try to accomplish some of those goals. There is a proposed one percent wage increase for all city staff members except the city manager position. This net change in wage increase is about twenty-five thousand dollars. Obviously, there was budgetary reviews of COVID nineteen impacts related towards revenues and expenditures, which we'll get into a little bit later, but that is something that both city staff and the council continue to kind of review the impacts that COVID nineteen has had in those revenue and expense categories. Due to coronavirus relief funding, this particular budget does not have any levy support that will be required for the taxi-bus fund. This is usually a tax levy support of forty-five thousand dollars. So what was done with that allowable amount is that was moved towards the CIP and allowed for kind of some one-time particular looks at project funding. Again, and our anticipation is that unless there is additional COVID relief funding, that will be something that will have to be put back, obviously, into the two thousand and twenty-two city budget. Due to some reimbursement of economic development costs to TID number six by TID five and TID seven, levy support will not be needed for TID six in two thousand and twenty-one. There was the anticipation that there would need to be about sixty thousand dollars that would have had to been utilized from the general fund to cover TID six. Due to some good review by staff, we were able to alleviate that cost in two thousand and twenty-one. And then one of the main goals, I obviously asked all of our department heads with everything going on with kind of COVID nineteen and some budgetary uncertainty, was to ask them to maintain operating expense accounts at the two thousand and twenty level. So I want to give credit to all of the staff for kind of reviewing all of their operational categories and doing the best they can to keep those amounts at the two thousand and twenty level. So going over kind of some of the operational increases, obviously, there's the creation of the HR specialist position, that's for sixty-two thousand dollars. Our IT service contract had some changes, so there's a twenty-one thousand dollar increase we're looking at there. In this budget, there is a financial outlay component for some software upgrades to occur, which we feel will really benefit not only the budget process, but some of the internal processes and being able to kind of keep better track of our purchasing management and really updating some of those systems. There's the conversation, again, of the communication specialist moving to full-time and the cost that that would require there, some increased street equipment repairs, garbage collection, and then brush chipping. Then some of the operational expense decreases that we saw is with some retirements and also with some position changes. There was a fifty-six thousand dollar reduction in fringe benefits with either employees not taking the health insurance or taking a less than plan. The room tax allocation, obviously, is one of the COVID nineteen impacts. So with the assumption that there is going to be less room tax collected in two thousand and twenty-one, that then directly impacts the actual allocation then that is given out for that. Street lighting, we saw about a twenty thousand dollar decrease, and that's due to a lot of LED improvements that were made. The city manager contingency account was decreased to allow for, you know, obviously, some other areas to receive funding. The election wages is something that we anticipate being less due to the fact that we are not going to have a presidential election. So that's some change there. Due to, obviously, the economy of vehicles and the cost of gas, there was the police area that was able to reduce their fuel. And so building outlay account was reduced by eight thousand dollars. So as you can see, overall, with the two thousand and twenty-one general fund expenses by use, the majority obviously is related towards public safety, which is our police-fire EMS. Public works then falls in at twenty-five percent of our overall expenses. And then general government falls in at fifteen with kind of conservation, development, culture, and recreation, and health and human services being the other areas. In two thousand and twenty-one, obviously, with COVID, there are definitely some operation revenue decreases that we are anticipating. So as you can see, there's about sixty thousand dollars we're anticipating in room tax allocation being less. With obviously less travel and parking restrictions, we are anticipating reductions in parking violations, court penalties and costs, building inspection permits, general transportation aids, interest revenue, and then obviously, state municipal service aids, and our video service provider aid is going down due to the fact that the cable provider is no longer offering that service. So that's a reduction that had to be taken into account. Some of then, obviously, the operational revenue increases that we are anticipating is the CRO reimbursement. So that's coming directly from the school district to offset the creation of that position. And then the utility payments in lieu of taxes are specifically done, as we review every year, the payment that the utility side has to make in regards to tax payments. So just to kind of give you a breakdown of how the general fund revenue by sources occurs. So obviously, with property taxes, we're looking at about a four point five percent increase there from two thousand and twenty. Other taxes, we're looking at a reduction, special assessments, we're looking at increasing there. Intergovernmental revenues is pretty much staying about the same as we're anticipating. License and permits, again, because of some of the COVID nineteen impacts, we're anticipating reductions there, as well as forfeits and penalties. Same thing with public charges for services. Intergovernmental charges is obviously seeing the biggest increase, and that's directly related to the new CRO position being reimbursed by the school district. So that is specifically the funding there. Miscellaneous revenue, again, is directly related towards some of those revenue losses that we're anticipating slowly starting to recover in two thousand and twenty-one. And then other financing sources, we are anticipating a little bit of an increase there. So then just kind of going over the mainly what makes up our general fund revenues. The majority of them, again, tend to be these two big pillars, which is intergovernmental revenues, and that's all of our state aid that we get, our general transportation aids. And then the majority of it is collected through property taxes. The rest of it is obviously some of the fees and charges that we have throughout various programming. But again, the two main components of our, of the city's general fund revenues still is intergovernmental revenues and property taxes. So just to kind of summarize where everything's at, again, as we said, we, one of the goals that the city had was, for city staff, was to keep pretty much the general fund as close to the two thousand and twenty budgeted number as possible. And as you can see, we're actually showing a slight reduction based on that. So we're anticipating about a point zero five percent decrease in general fund revenue, taxi or the general fund account. The taxi and the bus is increasing by eleven point eight percent, and that's generally directly related to the federal grants we're receiving from COVID. There is a little bit of debt service increase due to some new debt coming on from previous years. The CIP is obviously the biggest area, which is seeing the increase, and directly that's related to, we'll get more into that when we get to the CIP portion. But that really is because of the opportunities for federal assistance for some programs for the DOT, as well as other grant programs that are not normally available. TIF number four is obviously showing a reduction because it closed and no longer is there. So that's why that particular is showing a decrease. TID number five is staying relatively about three percent, showing an increase there. TID number six is showing an increase, as is TID number seven. RRD funding is showing a reduction, and again, that's just due to the funding source that's there as we continue to issue loans. And that money is out, there'll be less that's there. The housing fund is a new funding source, and that was directly related because of TID number four. So what happens is you have the ability in the last year of the life of a TIF to put that money into an account that can be used towards renovation of housing sources. So that is what that new account is going to be. And then obviously, there is the Brasky Center, which is the new account that was not, was just started pretty much last year, is showing a little bit of an increase. So overall, there is a twenty-five percent increase from previous years in regard to the budget, with the majority of that directly coming from the CIP fund, as you can see, with the hundred and sixty percent. So just to kind of overall show the impact that this is having on the budgeted levy. So for the general fund, we're showing about a four point five percent increase over the previous year. The taxi-bus fund is showing a reduction. The debt service fund is showing about a one point seven percent increase. And the capital fund is showing about two point three from direct levy support. And then when you get into more detail specifically of the capital improvement fund, as you can see, there's about three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars that is being anticipated to be levied by taxes. Three hundred thousand dollars is going to be transferred over from the general fund balance to cover it. We're anticipating about two million dollars in debt, and this is really the big difference in the capital fund this year, is there's about three point eight million dollars of other sources, which I'll get into in a second to show exactly what makes up that. So as you can see, here's the two thousand and twenty-one capital improvement plan. So what staff and the council kind of determined as priorities for this particular budget in two thousand and twenty-one was, over the next two years, looking at doing a city hall exterior maintenance project, funding improvements to the campground and expanding that for a revenue possibility. Improvements made to the Dairy Day Shed, tennis court resurfacing, replacing a nineteen ninety-eight two-wheel-drive pickup truck. This is one of the kind of one-off projects that we have this year, is we're in the process of working with the county on getting a grant to have the Hammer Robbins School Building roof replaced. So that is a grant that the county will be funding one hundred percent. And then we are looking at also doing some safety improvements to the train fence that is out there as well. The police department is looking at doing some upgrades to their camera systems and obviously their interview room camera, as well as replacing a mark squad that is due for replacement every couple of years. Some of the public works projects, again, one of the main ones that is kind of a one-off that we normally don't see is the opportunity for the Business Highway one fifty-one safety improvements, which has a DOT grant of one point four million dollars. So that requires the city to put in a percentage of about eight hundred and ten thousand. Then normally, we have our general street repairs that we try to do every year, and Dewey Street is up for that, as well as with the wheel tax that we have in place, about a hundred and ten thousand dollars goes towards replacement there, as well as some money that's allocated for sidewalk repair, highway striping. There's a sidewalk that was agreed upon with Dunkin' Donuts as part of the Business Highway one fifty-one. That's a partnership between us and then also the city. And then the last piece of this puzzle is obviously the Dewey Street, you know, potential storm sewer reconstruction for seventy-five thousand dollars. There also is some other public works items, replacement of the bucket truck, the box replacement, a backhoe and an end loader. There's an IT replacement that need, or IT refresh that needs to occur for the city in order to continue to be compliant with cybersecurity and obviously all of our computer systems. There's two vehicles that are funded primarily through federal dollars, but also there is some funding that is needed from the city in regards to a bus vehicle and a taxi. And then one of the priorities that the council and the city staff talked about was having a reoccurring line item for the local match that our airport needs to have to do a project. And they want to do a eight to ten new hanger out there. And so that would require about fifteen thousand dollars annually to start occurring as a city match for that. So overall, that equates to the six point six million in projects that you're seeing with almost, you know, three million dollars, over three million dollars of that being funded by either grants or other sources. So overall, when you put everything kind of looking together, where that puts this budget is an anticipated increase of about one point seven seven percent. So that would take the mill rate that was in two thousand and twenty of seven dollars and eighty-eight cents to eight dollars and two cents. So this kind of shows you historically where we have been over the previous years. So from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty, we had about a one point nine percent increase. So this is around one point seven. So where that currently puts the impact- So where that currently puts the impact on taxpayers is if somebody had a home of $150,000. That would equate to a yearly increase of about $21 or $1.75 a month. And then somebody that has a $300,000 home would equate to about a $41 increase or about $3.47 per month. So how does that kind of compare to some of our benchmark municipalities? So as you can see, we're kind of in the middle. There's been a couple of municipalities that are showing reductions this year, and that was due to a lot of increases they saw in their assessed value and net new construction. So that allowed them to potentially look at reductions. But still keeps it pretty much, you know, some of the benchmark eight, 10, $8. And then some you're also seeing have had to make some drastic increases where Bearaboo is looking at about 22 cents. Portage is anticipating about us about a 14 cent increase. So as you can see, there's kind of some that are increasing a little, some that are reducing due to some increased revenue sources that they saw. So again, what's this equates to at the end of the day is the is the value of the city services that are provided. So based on the proposed budget in 2021. A home assessed at 150,000 will pay $1,204 of city property taxes, which is approximately $100 per month. So some of the things to consider is what you could essentially buy with $100 a month. That could be a, you know, monthly cellphone service. Cable streaming service providers, small car, car lease. So what city services do you receive for $100 a month? You get 24/7 police protection. 24/7 emergency medical services, 24/7 fire protection. Yard waste pickup, snow and ice removal from the streets. Maintain parks, street lighting, elections, library, the museum, the recreation, street maintenance and more. So obviously that, you know, with this, the services that the city provides, those are some of the things that you receive. So at the end of the day, again, this comes down to, this is where the work has been done by staff. So obviously I want to give kudos to them for the time that they've spent on this. And obviously the questions that we've received from kind of residents who have had concerns as well as the council. I thank you guys for all the work that everybody has put into this in the meetings. And that is kind of the short version of that. Now we're up for any questions.
Okay, Adam, can you take your screen away so I can? Or can you stop sharing so I can actually see people? And I would note that during this time period, Colette, Robin Klein did join our meeting. So she is here, she is not on video, and but she is here. So we welcome. So before we, we will take public statements in favor against and in general and have a council discussion after that. But is there, is there any specific that a council member has of Adam? And I'll start with you, Ken. Any specific question you have of Adam on his presentation?
I don't have any.
Okay. Eileen, any specific question you have?
No questions for Adam.
Any specific questions you have?
No questions.
Kathy, any specific questions you have on the presentation?
No.
Isaac, any specific questions you have on the presentation?
No questions for Adam.
And Robin, any specific questions you might have? And I realize it had to be difficult for you because I believe you're still in your car.
Here I am. You cut out for a second, but I don't have a question.
Okay, okay. I think I've made it around to. I think I've made it around to everyone. So now I would take any public statements in favor of this budget. And what I would ask you to do is use the chat. I think it's, well, where do I find this raise your hand? Oh. It's under the chat function, I think. You can go.
If you click the participants. There's a raise your hand.
Okay, so if you would like to speak in favor of this budget proposal. I would ask that you use the participant button and raise your hand and I can call on you. So these would be statements in favor of the budget. Okay, I don't see any hands raised and I did have at least four students text that they are, or chat that they are on for class. Public statements against the budget. Again, I would ask if you have a public statement against the budget that you raise your hand. And I believe others are probably monitoring this too. Okay, public statements in general. Does anybody have any public, any public statement in general about the budget? Okay, that would be the public comments portion. So now we are to council discussion.
Barb, Barb, if I may, Christina sent a chat message saying she doesn't know how to access the raise your hand. So she just tried to wave.
Christina, you would, you would do it by using the participants app. But I don't even see that you're here. So somehow you're, you're, I don't see that. So Christina, if you have a comment about the budget.
Oh, I'm, can you hear me?
I can, I can hear you, but I don't have a clue where you are.
Oh, I'm here. I don't see the, in participants, just so you know, on our end, there's, from what I see, there's no way to raise your hand. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't see it.
Raise your hand. You don't get that?
What?
At the very bottom of your participant screen, if you bring it up?
No.
Invite, mute me or raise your hand?
I don't, am I, am I crazy?
I think you are.
More, it says mute, more, rename or add my profile picture. Oh, here it is. I'm sorry. I can raise my hand now. Sorry.
All right, you can raise your hand.
I'll lower my hand.
Just a minute, just a minute, Christina. I think that's important for you to know since you're a teacher. How to raise your hand.
Thank you.
Okay, so did you want to raise your hand as a public statement in favor against or in general?
I would like to raise my hand in favor of the budget.
Okay, and do you have something you want to say about it?
Well, I just appreciate the time that people have put into it. I know that there's a lot of effort that goes into stuff like that. And I think you're looking out for the best interest of the city and you're providing a lot of really good services for a lot of different types of people. And I appreciate the time and feel like it's a pretty small increase for the great benefits that we're getting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, now I believe that's the, that's the only person I can, now I, Christina, I can see you. Most people I can't see tonight because they have their video on. So. Okay, so we've public statements. Portion of this, it's time for council discussion. So Ken, do you have anything you would like to say during this council discussion?
I would like an explanation, I believe it'd be from the city manager. And it's about the community, community development planning. And let's see, I can't find the page number here. But if we go to community development planning. There's an extra column. I'd like to get an explanation of that column. And the column is the last one on the right and it says year forecast. And the one that's to the left of it is 2021 proposed budget. So could you explain the differences in the numbers? And why is your forecast put in there? Community development planning section.
I can.
I can, I can field this one, Adam, if you'd like.
Sure.
So the year forecast column is a tool that is it's a basic estimating tool that is provided for department directors when they are compiling their budgets. We typically don't show that on the council version of the budget because it's just a tool. Sometimes those numbers do not reflect the actual expectation for revenues or expenses in a line item because it's simply taking the year-to-date actual at that time and dividing it by the number of months and multiplying it by 12. And sometimes a revenue might come in at the beginning of the year or an expense might come in at the end of the year or something like that. The fact that you're seeing that column is just a typo error. It didn't get hidden like it should have been.
So it's a column that's used by other departments, but it somehow got left in for this department.
No, it's a, it's a column that's used by the department. So in this case, community development. It's a column that's on every spreadsheet. That's provided to every department director and is used by the director to help them in compiling their budget. But usually we, we hide it.
That's what I meant, that everybody else took that column off.
Correct. Well, yes, I took that off. I missed that one. So I apologize.
That's the only question I had.
Okay, no other questions? Okay, Eileen, any questions?
I do not have any questions.
Kathy, any questions?
Probably more comments than questions. I am. I know I've stated this before. I agree, I really have a true appreciation for everything that the city staff did in holding the line. Through this process, we, we have reduced the proposed levy down, down to 1.77. I would like to see that us not have, I would like to go to a zero increase. And I have talked to Adam to find out how we can do that. Specifically, I'm concerned with, it, it, most of it wraps around the, the whole COVID. From what we're hearing, the state shared revenues coming up are going to be challenging. And I've, I have been talking to a number of business people. Both me making a connection and them contacting me. I have not heard one person that is happy about a proposed tax increase, no matter how small. Times are just challenging. I actually spoke to a lady about two weeks ago from town here. Who is still waiting to receive any money from unemployment. So people are out of work. And one of the, the things that I know we've been talking about is the creation of this HR position. I understand the conversations regarding why to implement that position. But in going back through the strategic plan. We did call out about the information for the museum and increasing the communication part of it. But not the HR position. And that's a significant increase that will be, have to be maintained from here on out. The, I do have a comment. This business person cho, chose not to want to make a presentation. But I am, I am this individual's voice. And this gentleman told me that he really needs to hire more staff, but is unable to. So he, his comment was, it's very unfair for the city to hire more staff and make him pay for it. So I'm, I am very concerned, especially from the businesses standpoint about an increase and overall with this whole process, correct me if I'm wrong, but the city is sitting on 20.5 million dollars in loans. Is that, so we're in debt over $20 million. And if there is I would like to, for future, start seeing how we can cut that principal down in future budgets. And, and I realize it's a challenge. We have great city services. But I just really feel that there, that I'm, I'm, I am not in favor of an increase in the city's property tax at this time.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Jason?
Um, yeah, a question for Adam or Nicola. In terms of the impact of a tax increase on businesses, do they get hit in multiple ways? Or is it more so they were just, would you come out of their property tax as well? Can you kind of talk a little bit more about how maybe businesses might be impacted differently? Or maybe, maybe it's not much of a difference?
You want to take that one, Nicola, or do you want me to take it?
I can answer that. So the, the tax rate is applied against assessed value of the property. So that applies whether you're a residence or commercial district, or there's a couple of other small districts. So, so I would say that it affects businesses in the same way that it affects residences. It's simply an application of the tax rate against the assessed value.
So would it, would they, I'm assuming they would have to pay additional tax if they like own the building that the business is in versus if they lease it or?
Correct. So if you are a property owner. Then, then you would be responsible for the property taxes on that building. For example, if you, if you own a house that you rent out, then, then you, the property owner, pay the property taxes and then you receive rents. Hopefully from your winters. And likewise, if you, if you're a business. You may, you may own a business, but not the building that the business is located in. If, in which case, generally speaking, you're paying a lease. But the person that actually owns the property is the one that's paying the property taxes.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
Okay, any other discussion items here, Jason?
Um, no, just thanking everyone for, for all the work that they did and yeah, it's, it's definitely a process and there's a lot that goes into it. So a lot of difficult decisions. So just appreciate everyone's work.
Okay, Isaac?
Uh, no questions or comments.
Uh, Robin? No comment. Okay, I think you're still in your car somewhere. My comment, I'll make a comment now or during this discussion. I certainly appreciate the fact that we are able to give our employees some kind of at least token compensation increase. And I particularly thank the police union for their cooperation in this too. So that all employees, whether they be with the police union or otherwise. Will receive the same type of increase. I also thank the staff for all the work that they've done on this budget and we have struggled over this budget for a while. And and I know the staff have not only struggled over this budget, but have had a struggle this year, just like most people. So sincere appreciation. So I have, I have, I guess we have nothing else there. So if there's nothing, any further discussion. I guess I would take a motion to close the public hearing on resolution 20 dash 28. Approving the necessary funds for the operation and administration of the city of Platinum. For 2021. for 2021.
Still moved.
You have a motion by Isaac.
Second.
Second by Ken, to close the public hearing on this resolution 20 dash 28. Is there council action?
Uh, DOS?
Oh, we have to vote on closing the public hearing. Thank you, Colette. I always forget, we have to vote on that. Yes?
Okay, Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, now if there is a council action on, uh, resolution 20 dash 28.
So Barb, I would move to approve, or excuse me, adopt resolution 2028 appropriating, appropriating the necessary funds for the operation and administration of the city of Platteville for the year 2021 in the amount of 17,715,907 dollars as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Colette will vote.
DOS?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Cop?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on now to the second part of our public hearing, which is on authorizing salaries and rates of pay. So do we have a staff presentation on this and who is making it?
Oh, I can, uh, I can present that, um, this is the resolution that we, um, bring to the council in conjunction with a budget resolution each year, um, which represents the, uh, 1% increase, uh, according to the compensation plan. And so there you can see the, the, um, the rates of pay, the ranges of the rates of pay with the 1% increase included, um, for the 2021 budget year.
Okay, and it includes the HR position?
Yes.
And the moving the communication specialist to a 30-hour-a-week job, uh, to, to full-time?
Well, technically, that's, um, that's a change in hours, not a change in rate of pay. So the rate of pay in the resolution, um, is the same for that position, um, but with the 1% included.
Okay. Any other changes you want to note in that resolution?
Um, in the resolution itself, uh, there's no other changes to make note of. Um, the staff note does explain that, um, there were some changes that took place in 2020. Um, that, uh, the fire chief was made full-time. Um, and, uh, the community resource officer position was established with cost reimbursement from the Platteville School District. And then also that this budget does not include any step increases. And I, and I would just like to point out that, um, when the city adopted the compensation plan, the plan was intended to include step increases. Um, it was recognized that, um, many positions across the city were not at market rate. And the, um, the concept of the plan was to establish a pathway to bring, um, staff positions, many of them up to that market rate through a series of steps. Um, some of those would be implemented on an annual basis. And then as you would move up within the plan, uh, there may be two or three years between a step. Um, unfortunately, because of budgetary constraints, uh, we have only been able to, um, move, um, steps in one year since the plan was implemented. Um, and so that, that just reflects, uh, our budgetary challenges and the, the way in which budgets have been brought forward with, um, with as much restraint as is possible. And so, and so it just means that staff are, across the city, staff positions are not being paid at that market rate. Um, but we're hoping that, uh, things will improve and that we'll be able to start implementing that plan as it was intended.
Okay, that was staff presentation. I guess, uh, as per, um, public hearings, I need to see if there are any people who want to speak in favor of this, uh, resolution 20 dash 29, authorizing the salaries and rates of pay for our employees. Raise your hand if you would like to speak in favor, if you would like to speak against, or if you would like to speak in general. And I will just call on people who have raised their hand. Or if you don't know how to raise your hand, then wave it at the camera. We'll figure it out somehow. Okay, do I hear any council questions or council discussion on this? Jason, any questions or discussion?
Um, yeah, there was a question I was going to ask before. Um, just for clarification, the, um, the school tax levy, that decreased this year, right? How, what was the percent on that again?
I don't know. I don't know if Adam or Nicola know that offhand or not.
Memory serves me correctly, it's about a, what was it, a, close to a 50 cent reduction. I think, okay, your tax rate.
Okay, so would that, would that kind of even out then in terms of like the, the tax increase from the city? Or, or how would that, how would that kind of work out?
So there'll definitely be.
Every jurisdiction levies its tax based on its expenditures. So how it works out is that that, I, I guess, that's how it works out. So if any time, I mean, when we pay our tax, we pay our tax on a plate. Part of the plate goes to the city, part of the plate goes to the school district, part of the plate goes to the technical college, part of the plate goes to the county. Uh, and I don't think any goes to the state anymore. It used to. It used to be distributed five ways, now it's distributed four. And so each entity presents its budget and passes its budget and then determines its tax levy. And it's all those levies together that we collect. Did I get that?
You are correct.
Is that, so it really doesn't affect what we, what we collect is not affected by what somebody else collects. The percentages might be different.
Sure. But in overall property tax, I'm assuming if the school, what people have to pay for property tax for the school went down, that would offset a potential raise by the city in terms of like overall property tax?
It, it could. I, I would say that the city, generally in our budget process, I'm not going to say generally, I'd say typically, we, we don't take that into account. So we don't use the, you know, if, if the school district goes down and the, um, you know, county goes down, everybody goes down, that, you know, staff and, and I think overall, we don't look at that as an opportunity to, oh, well, we can do this or that. You know, our, our budget is always based on, we look at it as from the three, you know, I as a city manager, look at it from three ways. I look at it as number one, you know, I look out for what's the best interest of the staff and moving obviously the city in the right direction. What are the city priorities, whether strategically or initiatives that need to be approved? And then balancing that against, you know, how does that impact every taxpayer based on just the city's portion? Um, you know, you're getting to the, the point there, Jason, is that, yeah, sometimes there may be a benefit where, as we talked about, if the growth is not occurring in the city, but it's occurring, is occurring in towns, well, the city's not going to see that benefit, but eventually their school district tax may go down and they will see a benefit from it, because then that's less tax they're having to pay. So that all kind of plays together. The same thing with the county is if there's growth occurring in other municipalities, you're not going to see that benefit until the county's able to reduce their levy based on those other growth factors. So there's a lot of things.
Okay. Yeah, and the only reason I ask is, you know, I definitely, you know, hear the concerns about any type of, of tax increase, especially in, in, um, the, the impact of COVID. And, but if, you know, again, not that the city had planned on any decreases, you know, from, from other tax levy from like the school districts, you know, hopefully, I don't know if that would kind of offset, you know, in terms of, of that impact. So I guess just, uh, I'm trying to find a silver lining, maybe there isn't a silver lining, but you, you know, I know it's, it's just a really tough year, so.
Yep. Okay, Eileen, any questions on this resolution? No. Uh, Ken, any questions on the salary resolution?
What are you asking?
I'm asking you. Do you have any, this is council discussion on the resolution authorizing the salaries and rates of pay for officers and permanent employees. Any discussion, any questions?
I just have a comment and I guess wind up a question. I'm looking at the code enforcement officer. And as I recall, we're now on the third officer. And the salary, the wage for that person is 16.56 cents starting, goes up to 1940. Perhaps in the private, you'll tell me as to why we're now on the third code enforcement officer. And the HR specialist. Uh, HR, is that the one for the new person?
Yes.
That's up at 20.56 cents, so. Is the specialist going to be, um, a person with experience? Versus the code enforcement officer, is the code enforcement officer experienced or unexperienced? No experience? I'm just wondering why there's such a, uh, turnover there for code enforcement officer? And when you bring in the HR specialist, it's up at 20.56 cents, which is at the four level, big rate four. If you don't want to answer now, you can always, uh, send me a message.
Sure. I mean, I, I can definitely do that, yeah. I mean, there, there's factors that go into that. The code enforcement officer position is typically, right now, has been a part-time or, you know, it's allocated at about 20 hours. So that's a diff, there's a difference there, whereas obviously the HR specialist is looking to be a full-time position. Um, those are things where, yeah, I can definitely talk to you, Ken, you know, offline. But yeah, there's certain factors that are going to play into, we have to look at the HR position now where, you know, we're going to look, is there somebody internally that we currently have that would fit into that role? Or, you know, does it make sense to, you know, go for a full-on kind of posting of that position? Those are things we have to kind of sit down as, as I have to sit down with the staff and kind of figure out. Um, and that's where, you know, you and I have had some conversations, obviously, about the code enforcement officer and kind of looking at potentially, you know, there's been some factors with it being, you know, part-time positions. And some of them, we had, you know, ones where it worked out and they transferred to a different area or they took an actual, you know, police officer job or went to a different department. Um, and we do have somebody in that role now that, uh, is definitely doing a, we feel a bang-up job right now. Um, but there's certain things that, yeah, we'll continue to look at that and see, you know, review that in the future. You know, if we continue to have an issue keeping that position, then yes, we'll need to look at what we need to do, whether it's a different outlook, increase in hours, or a different perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Isaac, any questions?
No questions this time. Nope.
Kathy, questions, comments?
Uh, no questions.
Robin, questions or comments?
No, no questions.
Okay, then I would take, since we've now gone through the, uh, public comments section and our council discussion, motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing?
Okay.
Okay, Colette will vote.
DOS?
Yes.
Klein?
Robin? She might be in a place she can't hear you, Colette.
Okay, Stanley?
I'm almost on my desktop.
Okay, I can come back to you.
But.
I think she voted yes to close the public hearing.
Okay, Stanley?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
And Killian?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, now I would take a motion on resolution 20 dash 29, authorizing salaries and rates of pay for our employees including, uh, in the city for the year 2021.
I would move to approve resolution 2029.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second by Jason to approve resolution 2028, 29, authorizing the salary and rates of pay. Uh, Colette will vote.
Okay, DOS?
Yes.
Klein?
Yeah.
Stanley?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, that concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda tonight. We'll move on now to item number four on our agenda, which is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature. We have council minutes from October 27th and from November 10th, the regular meetings. We have payment of bills. We have appointments to boards and commissions. And tonight I am appointing Brian Weisnot to the Parks, Recreation and Forest Free Committee, Committee to a term ending June 1, 2023. We have licenses, there's Class A combination beer and liquor license for QuickTrip. Uh, for the premises at 795 North Water. QuickTrip has purchased what used to be the, I believe it was called the Stop and Go up by the high, up by the high school. One-year and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol, a taxi dri- taxi driver and taxi vehicle license. So we have a motion on this consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is consent, Colette will vote.
DOS?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we are now at citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. I have had nobody make contact with me early, earlier to speak at this particular time. If you have a comment, observation, or petition that you would like to, uh, talk about at this time, wave or raise your hand. But I think most of the people on here, it appears are either students attending for class, staff, or?
Barb?
Pickleball. Kathy?
As a, I would like to make a comment as a citizen.
Okay.
I would really like the cit, I know we talked about this through a process starting last summer, but I really think the city needs to be the one to try to address the, um, issue of our unstable internet in the community. I have had in this last week, three different days where my internet has been down. And I see on Facebook, a lot of people are experiencing the same thing. I really hope that the city will be able to, um, tackle that and, and see what we can do, if anything.
Yeah, I, I agree Kathy, I have seen a lot of people's internet issues. And so, um, Adam, write that down. I don't know if that takes talking to our legislators or who. But, uh, at some point in time, we have to figure out how to have better service here.
Barb, I also have a comment.
Okay, Robin?
Well, I will reiterate that one, too. I am all about figuring this situation out, and I've talked to several people in the community with some ideas, so I think part of that might also be a real call to citizens, uh, to help problem solve that situation. But, uh, we definitely need to take a lead and try to organize it. Um, my other comment is just because I don't know where else to state it. Um, I was wondering if we could ask Adam, and I could have done this ahead of time, I didn't, but to include a COVID update on our agenda for these meetings, um, much like the inclusivity update that he's just kind of given us, uh, where we're at. When we were talking about the masks, we were getting that, but just, I was feeling a desire for it to be on this week's agenda and, um, wondered if we could get that anyhow, or just have it as a rolling item.
Actually, Adam, I think you could probably do it tonight during the inclusivity, diversity, and equity update, just add on, and then we'll just add on COVID. There. I guess my citizen comment was going to be, I went to UW-Plattville and did the COVID test. I would highly recommend that anybody do it. It was a simple fifteen-minute test. You register in advance online, you get your little paper, you go, you stand there, you, they're very nice people. We had a wonderful young lady from New Orleans, who, by the way, was not looking forward yesterday to our snow today. I suspect her smile today was not as big as it was yesterday. She had a big smile yesterday. So, uh, uh, there is testing available at the university. It's free, it's quick. I believe the other testing now is at the Armory. Adam, is that correct?
Yes, when it's in Plattville, it's being at the Armory. Um, right now, they are, um, they have a couple of different spots that they're working on, so they're not in Plattville recently. Uh, but they've been at like Lanes End area, and they're trying to get, um, their hope is their funding, the funding essentially runs out December tenth. Uh, but the, um, call I was on yesterday, there is, is promising hope that that will either be renewed by the federal government, or the state will come in and supply some form of, um, assistance. And then, yes, they would, they would look at being in two locations, uh, Tuesday is potentially in Lancaster, and then again Friday is returning back to the Armory.
Is that the same test as, uh, as the university does? Is it the same process?
No, okay. That's the full-fledged, um...
Okay.
That's a PCR.
PCR.
Okay, I don't see anybody else frantically waving their hand to make any comments during citizens' comments, observations. So I think we'll move on to reports. Uh, there were several in your packet. Water and Sewer Commission, uh, I have nothing to add. How about you, Isaac and/or Ken?
No addition.
Okay, Airport Commission, Kathy?
Nothing more.
Uh, Library Board, uh, Robin?
I just wanted to note that the library's, uh, moving to curbside, uh, again, closing, uh, down a little bit more. So staff is adjusting to, um, that, and I just really appreciate their efforts to keep community members safe while providing services. Uh, so that'll be discussed further on the December second board meeting, again, how to go at it long-term. Um, but that is an announcement with that, I guess, so that's all.
Okay, and Robin, solid waste and recycled path force, and we do have...
Coming up later.
...for it later.
Yep, so nothing to add now.
Uh, Jason, Community Safe Routes?
Uh, no sidewalk policies, been our main focus, and I have, that's under information and discussion, so.
Okay, Historic Preservation Commission, Ken?
No addition.
And Parks, Forestry and Recreation, Jason?
I'm just happy to have somebody fill the vacant position again, and I don't know if that puts us at like a full committee yet, but if not, just asking for, for anyone to be a part of the Parks and Rec Committee. They meet at seven o'clock once a month on Monday nights.
And, and I believe I've made an, uh, uh, an appointment to that committee on a monthly basis.
I, it feels like it, it feels like it.
Biggest committee in town. Action items tonight, uh, we will start with, um, the first action item on the agenda is the pickleball new court location. And I guess, uh, Luke, are you on here? Yeah, there you are. Okay, Luke?
Yeah, so this is our third time discussing this, so I won't go into full detail, but there is a group of avid pickleball players that is interested in fundraising and building courts, um, in Legion Park. Uh, that group has preemptively, um, reached out to the Plattville Dairy Days, to, um, Plattville Youth Diamond Sports, and to our lead volunteer of the ice rink. Um, so they've done a, a great deal of due diligence in terms of reaching out to those that might be affected by that decision. Person Recreation Committee has also asked staff to send letters to, uh, neighboring property owners for both Legion Park and the, um, um, uh, alternate location, which it would be Westview Court. Um, we received only one contact back, which was from, uh, Councilperson Shanley, um, in favor of the Legion Park location. Um, he did indicate with that, though, that he would make, want to ensure that, um, the ice rink does indeed get moved along with that project, not just something promised at a later date. And I do believe that is something that the group would be supportive of as well, um, seeing that happen. Uh, one of our Parks, Forests and Recreation Committee members did get contacted by a neighbor of Westview Park, and they were opposed to that location. Um, so I guess what I would say is all signs seem to point to Legion Park being the preferred location in the community. Um, with that said, the Parks, Forests and Recreation Committee did vote unanimously to approve that as the location, um, as long as it include moving the ice rink, um, lights and water, and ensuring that we will have a location for ice skating in the future. Um, they also did, uh, a secondary motion where they approved twenty, or fifty thousand dollars from either the Orlo Clayton Trust or the, um, Plattville, um, I'm sorry, the, uh, Park Impact Fee, um, to be used towards this project. Um, staff, if that were to be the recommendation, would recommend five, or twenty-five thousand dollars from the Orlo Clayton Trust and twenty-five thousand dollars from the Park Impact Fees, so splitting it between those two accounts. Um, but, uh, that would be a, a secondary action that the council just would be, have the option of taking.
Okay, Luke, uh, there are a number of people in the audience tonight who are, I believe, supportive of this pickleball. I think that's what they would speak in favor of. I believe they have a spokesman, or I was told that they used to have a spokesman, and I believe that that's Bill Grutz. Am I correct? Oh, it's Larry Tryne. Excuse me, I see Larry's hand waving. Last week it was Bill Grutz, tonight it's Larry Tryne. So Larry, uh, I would ask that you introduce yourself, give your address, and then, uh, tell us about pickleball. Whatever you want to say about this before we have a discussion.
Well, yes, Larry Tryne, um, um, I've been involved in the Plattville community for some time. Right now, I'm actually down here in Florida, um, but, uh, um...
So what's your, do you have a Plattville address? We need your address.
I do not. My address is, uh, seven one-two Sharon Drive, Lady Lake, Florida.
Okay.
We have a lot of Plattville, uh, uh, area people that play pickleball, and, uh, we've been playing a long time, um, with, uh, nets aren't the right size and courts that are, you know, no lines on them and so on, and, uh, we're all very excited about the possibility of having our own dedicated courts, and, uh, we look forward to doing the fundraising, to have those courts, uh, available for, uh, grand opening at Dairy Days.
Okay, and Larry, uh, can you name the people on this, or can you see? I don't know what, what you're looking at, but perhaps you could just name the people who are on tonight, who are part of your group, so that others would know that.
Sure, you know, once upon a time, I did see a list down my right-hand side. Um, I don't see it right now, but I believe I saw Bill Sanders there, I saw, uh, Gene and, and Jim Peters, I saw Wally Iceland, I saw, um, Eileen McCartney, uh, I'm sure Bill and Deena are there, Deena Grutz, and, uh, probably Mike and Cheryl Hefty. But, uh, like I say, I, I don't have that pull-down menu. I'm not real familiar with how to work.
How to do that, okay. I also see Gordy Jimski here. Would he be part of your group?
Uh, yes, he would be. I just managed to get a Valerie, or a gallery view, where I'm seeing a lot of people here. Uh, I see a Trannel, that could well be another person. Um, I know I saw a G member here, and that she, and he's been, uh, very interested in following our project, very, very helpful in our efforts.
And Joyce Evelyn?
He's probably interested.
Joyce Evelyn? Joyce Evelyn, I see Cheryl nodding her head, yes. So I, I would say you have a pretty good contingent here.
Yeah.
Well, uh, there has been the presentation, uh, Luke has, uh, through the Parks, Forestry and Recreation Committee is recommending, uh, the Legion Park, uh, area uh, contingent on the project, including moving the ice rink and the lights and water. And it also, uh, recommending, uh, fifty thousand dollar, uh, support in terms of twenty-five thousand from Park Impact Fees and twenty-five thousand from the Orlo Clayton Trust. So I will now go around to council members and ask if there are questions. Isaac?
Uh, no questions or comments this time, so it's glad to see you moving forward.
Okay, Kathy?
Um, no, I, I, I do have a question of Luke, um, for the park, uh, fee fund. Is, 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 what are the requirements for that money to be used?
So the requirements, essentially, I look at it as you have to really answer the question. We now have an increased population, um, so therefore we need X. Um, so as new developments go in, that money gets set aside, so it can only be used for new things. You can't use it to repair old things.
Okay.
Um, so I couldn't use it to, you know, repave the, a trail or to resurface tennis courts. I could use it to build on or add additional tennis courts, or in this case, add pickleball. Um, but it's those, those new items, and then we have to use it within seven years of it being, um, given to the city. Um, that's not an issue here, um, but, uh, part of the reason I am proposing some of the money coming from there is to make sure we are continuing, you know, to use that money as it comes in.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Ken, any questions or comments?
No questions, no comments.
Jason?
Um, yeah, just excited for the new project and glad that we were able to also, um, find another place for the, to keep the ice rink going, too.
Okay, Robin, questions or comments?
I was thinking this might have been addressed, but I'm not recalling. So it's, the ice rink would go over the baseball fields that would still be used in the summer months, or would they also be moved?
So, yeah, yeah, no, we would look to, uh, put the ice rink likely mostly between the, um, two baseball fields. So the goal with those two rookie fields that are on the, uh, northwest side of the park is they will eventually, um, face each other with a shared outfield. There's not really enough space in there, that space for, for two even small fields, um, without, you know, a chance of hitting the ball into an infield, but with smaller kids, uh, one of the things that's popular, and especially in larger cities, is to actually have those two fields kind of face each other again with that shared outfield. So we'd utilize in that shared outfield for, primarily for our ice rink. So the, the fields would still be utilized in the summer.
Okay, I just thought maybe I saw in the picture that a lot of the ice rink was on the actual field space, and I wondered if that was just going to be an ongoing maintenance issue.
Yeah, I, I, the truth is, I don't know. Um, I don't know exactly how that's going to affect the infields. Um, right now, they're not utilizing the best fill. They're not using, they're not like our other fields that utilize. We, like, we bring in a special clay for the other fields or a special sand. This is just fill that was found in the community that we were able to utilize to make these fields temporarily. Um, so I think it would probably be okay, but it is something we'll, uh, we will continue to monitor. I would also say our ice rink traditionally has been huge, uh, like, really, really big. I don't know if we need that big of ice rink going forward. I would say that if we had one that was, you know, the average size of a hockey rink, that would be sufficient, whereas ours current one has been upwards of, of two hockey rinks. Um, and that's, I, I think that's just quite large and, and uses a lot of water. Um, so we would try to shrink it down a little bit, probably. Um, part of where my drawing came up with as well was, I was trying to find a way also that the lights could be used for baseball, the ice rink. So, you know, it's kind of that balance there of, you know, having the multiple uses of the lights versus them bleeding over, the ice rink bleeding over to the ball fields. You know, I just want to find the most wins possible with this, um, and that might be sharing the lights.
Okay, thank you. Eileen, comments or questions?
No, my understanding is, um, if this is approved this evening, basically, we're approving the location, and then the city staff starts talking to the Pickleball Association again about what are the next steps in terms of fundraising, or in terms of anything else that might have to be covered in terms of, uh, city responsibility and, and pickleball association. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, I mean, we've certainly had many, many talks already. Um, staff has kind of encouraged them to start fundraising. I know they've done some, but nothing publicly. Um, they're kind of waiting for this in order to really launch their, their public fundraising campaign, which you really want to take a rush on, and if anyone's listening that's interested in giving, if this is approved, I would strongly encourage them to reach out to this group, um, because it does seem like it's going to be a great project, and we do want to try to, you know, fundraise as much as possible early, so that we can get on the early bidding or when, uh, we're able to bid it out in February, March, versus having to wait until, you know, spring, summer, when contract is already booked.
Okay, Eileen, and does that answer your question?
That answers my question, thanks.
Okay, Luke, just to know, you were breaking up for me. I don't know if you were breaking up.
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, so I think we've got, and I have no questions about this project. So I think we've gone around. Uh, do I hear any council action?
I'd make a motion. I'd make a motion to allow the Plattville Area Pickleball Association to proceed with the fundraising for a pickleball complex to be located at the southwest corner of the Legion Park, with the condition that the project includes the relocation of the lights and water for the use by the ice skating rink, as well as make a motion to use the twenty-five thousand dollars in the Park Impact Fees and twenty-five thousand from the, uh, Orlo Clayton Trust towards the construction of the pickleball courts.
And we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I will second.
Okay, motion by Isaac, a second by Robin to approve, uh, the, uh, project and the, uh, fifty thousand dollars, twenty-five from Park Impact Fees, twenty-five from the Clayton Trust. So Colette will vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Hertz?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Right, and thank you all for attending. You are all welcome to continue to stay, but I already see people disappearing. Let's go on to our second action item, which is, uh, Contract nine dash twenty, uh, which is snow and ice removal. And I guess we are going to have winter.
Yes.
Howard?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, it looks like it's going to be, uh, a snowy winter or something like that. Okay, um, every year, the city contracts out for removal of snow and ice on sidewalks where the owners do not shovel their walks. Uh, we charge the, the contract charge plus a thirty-dollar admin fee. We've worked with two local firms, so we received two bids. The code enforcement documents and measures the snowfalls. Uh, when the snowfall is two inches or more, uh, the code enforcement officer documents with a photo, goes around to all sidewalks after twenty-four hours to document potential violations. Uh, he places a door hanger and documents the address. Uh, and the contractor only goes to documented locations after the additional twenty-four hour period. If the sidewalk is cleared, there's no further action. If it's not cleared, uh, the contractor removes snow and ice. In your packet, what I did was I put in bold, um, additional information from the... additional information from the previous one. Last time, there was a question regarding weekend enforcement. The CEO was hired with the expectation that he would be called in on Saturday or Sunday when required to document and enforce. We also have a, a community service officer who can assist when the CEO is not available. Staff intends to track these additional hours. So what we're saying right now is that we believe the best value is with, with Four Seasons because of different conditions. So we're recommending awarding the contract to Four Seasons Landscaping at the offered bid prices. Twenty five dollar, twenty five cents a square foot, fifty dollar minimum for snow only or thirty dollars per square foot or thirty cents per square foot and fifty five dollars minimum for the hard packed and snow and ice.
Okay, questions? Isaac?
No questions.
Ken, questions? Jason?
No questions.
Robin?
Can I have a reminder as to who did the contract last year?
It was Southwest Lawn Care last year.
Okay, thank you. Eileen?
No questions.
Okay, folks, I think I made it around. Kathy, did I ask you?
Oh, no, no questions, so.
Okay, now I made it around. All right, no questions. So do I hear a motion?
I move to award contract nine dash twenty to Four Seasons Landscaping at the bid prices as offered, twenty five cents a square foot, fifty dollar minimum for snow only or thirty, thirty cents a square foot or fifty five minimum for hard packed snow and ice.
Okay, we have a motion by Jason and a second by Ken to approve this contract with Four Seasons. Colette will vote. Us? Yes. Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, that concludes the action portion of our agenda tonight. And so we will now go on to information and discussion items. The first is, which is Enterprise Fleet Management. And Adam, I see you're here. I also see that Matt has joined us tonight. So Adam, I guess we take it, we let you take it away and go from there.
Yeah, so obviously this is our second kind of go around at this conversation. So pretty much throughout the majority of, I would say, into fall, we started having conversations with Matt and obviously Enterprise about the potential for this opportunity. You know, one of our goals, obviously, as city staff is always continue to look at how we can, you know, best stretch taxpayer dollars and utilize them to their fullest. So one of the conversations that came up was the possibility of partnering with Enterprise in joining into a fleet management program. So what we're looking at is essentially starting off with about thirteen vehicles that would be leased from Enterprise to the city of, of Platteville. And the way this system works is they will continue to work, obviously, with our finance department in the city in budgeting the amounts that we feel can fit into our budget to increase vehicles. So the way we looked at this particular proposal is with the CIP plan that was approved, there was about seventy seven thousand dollars between the water and sewer budget and the CIP budget for replacement. And those were basically two vehicles and then a dump body that were going to be replaced. So what Enterprise Management does is they kind of look through the possibility of how you can stretch those dollars and basically update your fleet. So right now, seventy percent of our current fleet is over ten years old. With the, the oldest vehicle is obviously approaching twenty three years. So what this particular program does is kind of allows the city to get into a better budgetary perspective of how many vehicles we can kind of routinely replace in a year, but also allows us to decrease the age of our fleet. And depending on the type of the vehicle can either be replaced in three years, five years, or, you know, that's the continual analysis that's done. The big advantage, obviously, with going to this type of, of plan is the, is the resale value that Enterprise has. So we obviously as a city have a government rate that we receive on our vehicles. So when we purchase them, we already get a reduction. And depending on the, you know, amount of wear and tear that is on those vehicles, when they go out onto the lot to be sold, Enterprise has the ability to sell those to obviously a wide range of potential customers. And depending on who that is, they will pay more than what the, obviously, prices that we got. So that's where you start to see some savings as this moves along. Obviously, staff has kind of reached out to multiple municipalities who have utilized this. So we reached out to Manitoak and Oak Creek. Were two of them and they're definitely, the response we received is that the relationship has been good. And they really, both of those municipalities mentioned the fact that they enjoy the fact that you have a particular agent, kind of another staff member that is working on your behalf to buy and sell these vehicles at the appropriate time that is in the best interest of the city. Another thing, one of the questions that kind of remained from the last time we talked about this was how this would impact our insurance. So I did reach out to John Gibson, who is our Tricor Insurance Representative. And he actually reached out to the city of Ashland, who is one of their clients. They indicated they've been happy with the service. And from an insurance perspective, they noted that Enterprise will obviously need to be listed as an additional insured on the auto policy. And then, but otherwise, Tricor is fine with covering leased vehicles. That has no impact on that. The big plus indicated by the city of Ashland is that they do have many new vehicles as they have an aging fleet. You know, one of the downsides is obviously there is going to be an increase in the insurance just due to the fact that you're going to new vehicles. So therefore, the auto physical damage insurance is going to go up because those vehicles are going to be worth more. So what Tricor wasn't able to really supply us with a total dollar amount. But what they indicated is, you know, what they typically would estimate is about a five to ten percent a potential increase on the insurance. So and obviously, conversations with Matt, how we would attack that is look at the thirteen vehicles that we have. And if it is going to show an increase in the budget, we would decrease those vehicles down to be able to account for the increase that we would see from the insurance standpoint. So, you know, the end result with this, again, we also did reach out to Dave Lambert, who is with the Highway Commission for Grant County. They have a couple of vehicles that they have just recently started with the program, but they indicated it did help the county get three new crew cab pickups and fit the cost into their existing budget, kind of similar to what we're looking at doing. You know, they're planning to consider purchasing those vehicles later on, but that's another partnership. So again, you know, some of the concerns that were kind of mentioned last time, which I think are valid, is how this potentially could impact, you know, some of our local vendors. And, you know, the way we would look at that, obviously, is depending on, as we've talked about, you know, depending on what vehicle it is, whether it's Ford or Chevy or GMC. You know, some of the benefits that our local businesses would see is with a lot of the routine maintenance that would need to be done. And obviously, anything that would be a warranty is directly done by those dealers. So they may not see the actual purchase price, but if you think about it, if we're looking at, you know, our normal process was only two vehicles and fixing a dump bed. This is fifteen potentially or thirteen potentially new vehicles. So that obviously is a benefit that those local municipalities are going to see. I wasn't able to do a deeper analysis into, you know, some of the questions about could be leased vehicles through other areas. I know, Howard, do you know, were you or Nick able to do that? I know we've been dealing with the budget, so that was, that was one of our priority lists, but we may not have been hit that yet.
Didn't get to that. Yeah, sorry.
So, no, that's okay. I mean, we knew we were going to have that conversation. So I guess again, you know, some of the, the main advantages that obviously staff sees by going to this model would be a consistent annual budget for vehicle replacement. We're going to be more proactive versus kind of reactionary. We would have a set number every year that we would be looking at doing. Newer vehicles again would increase employee safety and satisfaction. There would be some financial savings we would anticipate due to fuel economy on newer versus older vehicles. Financial savings due to less maintenance and repair, which then would allow the city mechanic to spend more time performing repairs on some of our larger vehicles. And obviously, you know, one of the other ones that we haven't talked about is depending on how this program goes, there's the potential to then future look at, you know, our police department as a potential part of this program, as well as some of our other vehicles that may make some more sense to add into this. So again, Matt is obviously here for any kind of questions or concerns and obviously his staff. So one of the things we'll continue to look at that still needs to be answered is obviously how the, you know, the cost benefit would be between, you know, purchasing these vehicles. And Matt gave us some additional information, but otherwise, obviously, we're open to some more discussion and questions on this.
Okay, so Matt, before I make a round robin here, do you have anything you want to add or say?
Thanks for the opportunity again. Adam, I think said it very well. And essentially, this program, you know, you all received a fleet synopsis last time. I believe Adam, the council members, did receive that via email from you. So that will explain kind of the current state of the city, what the results were of what we found and what the potential could be moving forward. And what you're going to see is a true twelve month progression on what we're expecting the city to, to operate under a leased program. The one option or the one consideration that we did not put on paper, and I discussed with Adam, was these vehicles will not deliver January first. So the, the true cost of the program that you have on, on the synopsis is a true twelve month roll. Whereas when the vehicles would deliver in, you know, springtime, it'd be more of a nine or, or eight to nine month period where the vehicles would, would be on the books for the city of Platteville. So the cost of the program in year one is actually less than what we're projecting, just based on the timing of vehicle delivery. Because the city would not pay for any vehicle or leases with Enterprise until the vehicle's actually delivered. So. And then on one of the other concerns with working with local vendors and the, in the marketplace, I believe, Adam, there's been history of buying vehicles through the state bid, which has typically been a non-local dealership, correct?
I think it varies. Howard may be able to add that. I think sometimes it's been through local and then sometimes we've gotten them from other places.
Okay.
Most, most of the time, it's through normal competitive bidding locally with our, with our local vendors. It's just that one, one of the dealerships seems to have a, a better pricing structure from, from their corporation than many of the others. So we've tended to go with, with one, with one type of vehicle more than others. But it's been with our local dealerships.
Okay, that's great. And the other thing to consider too, about when you look at moving the acquisition side of your fleet to Enterprise, on average, the city's acquired about one vehicle per year. So again, it takes twenty two years or so, or twenty three years to cycle through all your vehicles. And what we're going to do is if we shift that philosophy to Enterprise, we're constantly cycling in new vehicles every single year. So when we look at what Adam said, running those vehicles with maintenance and warranty issues directly to those vendors, also, we do have to, we do have to deliver those vehicles through a represented manufacturer. So whether it's GM, Ford, or Chrysler, or Nissan, or Toyota, we do have to deliver them. And typically, logistics makes sense to deliver them locally. So they do charge Enterprise a courtesy delivery fee for that. So we are giving back a little bit to the vendors as well. And then if you think of the quantity that's, you know, potentially at hand here, you know, one vehicle versus, you know, ten or fifteen vehicles, depending on the number per year, it's going to be a substantial increase in volume through those local dealerships as far as a courtesy delivery goes.
Okay, I'm going to start through. Isaac, do you have questions of Adam or Matt?
No questions.
Eileen?
A couple of comments, I guess. One of the things that we had discussed at, excuse me, budget time was perhaps starting some kind of fund where we would try to plan ahead for the, the vehicle purchases that we know we need. So that would be another option as opposed to leasing. And again, I'm just asking these questions because I think that I, I would like some information, maybe Adam from you and Nicola as to, you know, what that looks like. And the other thing I recall from our last conversation with Matt is that there are certain vehicles that Enterprise does not sell or lease, I should say, excuse me. So we're looking at some pickup trucks and things like that and, and where you add the, the thing to the dump truck later. But I'm wondering again how that impacts our budget, because if we buy fifteen vehicles or lease, excuse me, lease fifteen vehicles and it's a set amount. But then if we come along needing a bucket truck, how does that impact our budget that year? So I'm trying to put that together to see how we also take care of items that other departments need that maybe are not included in the Enterprise presentation.
Yeah, because I think the bucket truck this year, wasn't it a hundred and thirty eight thousand?
Correct. So the way that would work is these, those vehicles would still be, so how the, what I would like to call the soon to be revamped CIP process will essentially be just as you kind of indicated, Eileen, is we look at, you know, what I would like to get to is we have these vehicles that would be under if, if we would go to the Enterprise system. We would know these vehicles and have a set dollar amount that we know every year needs to be replaced. The same thing then would occur with the vehicles that we know aren't. So it's not that by going to the system, we're kind of shifting the balance where, you know, by purchasing fifteen, it's going to impact those other vehicles. Those other vehicles will still fall into the normal kind of capital improvement planning process. What this does is this allows us to look at, okay, normally, if we were to purchase it ourselves, we would only be able to buy X, whether that's one or two, or we know we'd buy two. What we would do then is knowing if we were budgeting three, we would bring that information to Enterprise and they would do their analysis to say, okay, the three vehicles that you normally would buy on your own would be a hundred thousand dollars. With that hundred thousand dollars, we're able to replace five, ten, fifteen, whatever, whatever that number is. And they use the ability to sell those vehicles at a certain time and make the, you know, profit or ability to get it back to then be put back into those vehicles so they stay under that budgeted number. Well, that helps.
Okay, Ken? Ken seems to have disappeared off my screen. Up there he is. Ken, questions of Matt or Adam? Ken?
He's muted, Barb.
I know, but he's, he should still hear me. Ken?
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Kathy?
I guess I, I still, there's two things. I'd really, really like to hear feedback from our local vendors about whether or not it's possible that they can provide that kind of a service, whether they already interact with Enterprise. A little background, so. And then the other thing, I believe, Eileen, you brought it up at our last meeting. The question is, what do we as a city do if we make this change? In year one, we have thirteen vehicles. Year two, we're up to twenty six. Year three, we decide they, this isn't working. Then all of a sudden, we have no vehicles. What, what happens then? Has, has that ever happened to a community or an entity? And what would we be looking at in that kind of a scenario? I mean, I have, I have personal experience leasing a vehicle. And I know that there are good times to lease and then there are times where it's not, where it's better to buy. So I'm not an expert in that. So just two, two things.
So one question deals with, one, we can, is a local reaction. We can gauge that and find that out. A bigger question is A bigger question is, you're into the program. And for whatever reason, you can't make it work anymore. Or you don't want it to work anymore, or it hasn't really been working like you thought. Because it's true, Matt, that your projections are on what you think you can sell the parts for. Right?
Yeah, the projections are based off of what vehicles are actually selling for today. So for example, when Adam and I sat down and Howard and the company. And looked at what a two or three-year-old vehicle would sell for. In the future, we're looking at what a that vehicle type is selling for today at two or three years old. So we're using a lot of historical data. Enterprise as a whole, company-wide, sells about a million vehicles per year. So with that type of data and information, we are very key on the market trends, the ups and downs throughout the entire year. Around the entire country, every state's a little bit different, the market's different, whether you have four seasons or two seasons. All that's taken into consideration. On the, on Kathy's concern about. You know, we're into the program and we decide this isn't working. The best part is anytime the the city is leasing a vehicle from enterprise, just because of the government buying power and the way we establish the leases. The city is in a positive equity position from day one. So if the city decided to part ways with enterprise and wanted to either sell off a vehicle or buy out the vehicle. Chances are very good from day one, you're going to have positive equity coming back to the city for that vehicle, because it's going to be worth more. Than what it's on the books for. And the city retains all ownership benefits of the lease, unlike Kathy's personal lease scenario. So this is a completely separate. Type of lease than what the personal lease would typically be. We call the Kathy lease, what she's experienced, those are closed-end leases. So those are no equity gain at the end, mileage restrictions, wear and tear penalties, very low mileage-driven. Vehicles typically. But what the advantage of an enterprise program is, we can still offer a very low lease payment. The government buying power, enterprise is selling power, but no mileage restrictions, no wear and tear fees. And enterprise's resources to remarket the vehicle. To to sell that asset at the right time of its life to help pay down future assets is what's going to help keep the program running smoothly. And that's exactly what, you know, Adam had conversations with the city administrator at City of Oak Creek. Finance director at the city of Manitowoc. We have a case study that I believe I supplied Adam with from the city of Wausau. That's been doing this for over five years. So at the end of the day, we have a lot of great references to reach out to and encourage that amongst the council members if they would like to do so.
Okay. Kathy? Can we, shall I move on or do you have additional questions?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Jason?
Questions? I would just agree with Kathy that I'd like to hear feedback from the current local vendors and just kind of see what their thoughts are.
Okay. Robin?
I don't have any additional questions.
Okay. All right. And so, Matt, you're telling us that we're free to call and talk to any of your client list about their experience.
Yes, absolutely. I believe Adam has some references available. I would use those as a starting point. And if there's more needed, absolutely. We have over 20 government clients that are actively doing this today. Cities, counties, and school districts.
All in Wisconsin?
All in Wisconsin, about 1,400 government agencies across the country.
Okay, I think then. We know the questions that need to be answered and and to get around. You called the consumer lease a closed-end lease. What kind of lease do you call your lease?
We call ours an opened-end equity lease.
Open-end equity lease?
Yes.
Okay.
And just, just to reference a few points on, you know, comparing, you know, enterprise versus a local vendor. The differences you're going to see are the dedicated account management that we're going to be able to provide the city of Platteville, like we have our other cities and counties and school districts. Having a dedicated account manager managing the fleet, understanding market trends, giving you data and analytics, a website portal. To really analyze all costs of your fleet in one setting. Is going to be the biggest differentiator than a typical dealership is going to be able to do. So I know initially we have to go off of price. So Adam and his team, they do have a vehicle comparison to compare, at least off of pricing. But from a leasing perspective, cash flow benefits and dedicated account fleet management. There's going to be apples and oranges there in comparison. And that's where I think you all will see the biggest difference.
Okay. I think we're ready to move on to the next item. And this will not move forward for action. At the December meeting, because we have questions that are unresolved. So it will be on for discussion again. In at the December meeting, which I believe is December the 8th. Okay, thank you, Matt. Alrighty, and if you want to play pickleball, you'll know where to go.
Absolutely. I'm excited to.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the sidewalk policy. And do I see Joe or, here's Joe. Joe, is it you that, or is it? I'm, I'm not on my agenda, so I don't know who wrote the staff note.
Well, I wrote the staff note originally, but I haven't changed anything. So last time. The additional edits, I think Adam put those together. So I guess it would depend on if anybody has any questions about either item. We'll address it as necessary.
Okay, so I, Adam, do you want to take this?
Yeah, sure.
At last meeting, when we went over this, there were some questions and comments and concerns. And so I asked every council member to send their comments, their suggestions, whatever, in writing to Adam. And, and so Adam, do you want to go from there?
Yeah, so what I received was, as far as sidewalk policy suggestions, there was obviously the. Section C, which talks about, you know, all properties adjacent to street reconstruction projects, so if sidewalk installed along the street frontage. Where no, where none exists and sidewalk repaired or replaced when the existing sidewalk is unsafe, defective, or insufficient. The proposed language or the, I guess the recommendation was that. All properties to street reconstructive projects shall include sidewalk repair and replacement where existing sidewalk is unsafe. Defective or insufficient and or where sidewalk grades no longer match new street grades. Additionally, where no sidewalk exists, properties adjacent to street reconstruction projects shall be reviewed for sidewalk installation. The installation of sidewalks that can connect to and extend the existing sidewalk system is a high prior, is a higher priority than the installation of isolated sidewalk sections. So that was section C of the document was the recommendation there. You want to take them one at a time, or you just want me to kind of go over everything that was talked about? What would you prefer?
I, I guess.
We'll do the whole thing.
Just do the whole thing.
So then in section D, it talks about commercial, industrial, and multifamily developments on existing lots. There was the question of should industry parks be different? The proposed change was commercial and multifamily developments on existing lots. So basically, taking the industrial park out of the equation. Then there was talk about sidewalks shall be located on both sides of the public street. And the proposal is that sidewalks should be located on both sides of public streets, except where such insulation. May involve significant grade and or ground preparation issues, such as rock layers that may require blasting. And or other significant removal methods. Additionally, sidewalks may be considered for cul-de-sacs, but shall not be required. So. With that is kind of references, and I guess the perfect example would be my neighborhood currently calling court has no sidewalks. And so it's the question of, you know, with the majority of people in that corridor, the majority of traffic is just those individuals in that area. Whether or not sidewalks would be required. The other recommendation I got from the council member is that they don't really have any changes they would like to see to the sidewalk policy. They understand, obviously, that it's cost prohibitive for the developer, but that's why they can ask for an exception. However, especially in affordable housing projects and when considering, considering workforce pass to work. They were a strong advocate for the sidewalks. They prefer two sidewalks, but feel like this is a reasonable place to compromise, so that there's an opportunity maybe there to just have one. And then also thinks the policy needs to apply to the industrial park, perhaps with the delay allowed. So those are really the two recommendations we got from council members.
Okay. Folks, we're talking about sidewalks again. Isaac?
No questions or comments?
Does that mean you prefer the policy to stay as it is?
Oh, I mean, I'll go through and state what I thought from beforehand, and I stated every time. You know, new subdivisions, again, I've stated that, you know, I don't agree that there should be sidewalks in new subdivisions. Our requirement that there need to be sidewalks in new subdivisions. Also, on the, you know, reconstruction of a street where there's not a sidewalk now, I don't think that should be mandatory that to be on there. And there's some cases where. Financially, as well as terrain-wise, does not allow it. Give an example, there is a couple houses, I know, with a few blocks here that do not have a sidewalk and the people can park right there or if all sudden in their yard or driveway, excuse me. But if you were to put a sidewalk in, they would no longer be able to, because their car would hang over onto the sidewalk. So there'd be a change there that would need to be met. So. There's things I don't agree with it. And, you know, once we get to a vote area, I'll make some comments then.
Okay, Robin? Are you thinking the policy should go up for action as it is?
I feel like the policy has been hammered out with a lot of people weighing in. I do understand that there's still some. Disagreement, as Isaac expressed, but I think that's where exemptions are made or conversations can be had in the future. I know with planning, it's not great to just continually keep making the same exemptions or considerations, but. I think that it's good to send the message that we are leaning in favor of supporting the sidewalks and that it has to be an exception. I think if you're going to develop an area, you've got to be ready to do it right, because when is there a time that you're going to come back and. Really address it again. So. I was the one that made the comment that I think in affordable housing and workplace developments, those are the places where we want to justify. Cutting corners to get the project done, but those are the places where people need pedestrian. Routes. So I think that it's too important to cut the corners there and someone's got to toe the line and make it happen. And we'll find the money. If they really want to develop, we'll figure out how to make that happen. This is something that needs to be prioritized. So. I say as presented.
Okay, Eileen?
I agree that was the comments that were written or read by Adam. I also agree with Isaac, an existing subdivision. I don't think that it should automatically be that sidewalks are installed when the streets are redone. I think it has to be on a. Case-by-case basis. I also mentioned last time that I, I think if it's a public sidewalk, it should be cement. I'm not in favor of either asphalt or the pavers. I don't think that they're appropriate for a public sidewalk. If it's, to me, as I said before, if it's asphalt, it's a trail, and that's different than a sidewalk. And the pavers, I think, are a problem in our winter weather. If you want to do it on your own private sidewalk, that's one thing, but not in a, not in a public sidewalk. I agree with, at this point, no sidewalks in the industrial park. I think that can be revisited later. And I realize there are, the, the staff has the ability to make exceptions. But I guess I do believe in sidewalks where there's an existing sidewalk or where there's only a partial sidewalk, like on Camp Street. I do think that those should be the first priority. To attend to those areas. They're obviously high-traffic areas already. That's all.
So are you in favor of sending the policy as it's currently written? On to the action agenda? I mean, we can't, we have to either make changes to it or send it on.
We can, if you send it on, Barb, there are going to be a lot of, I think, discussions like this right now. Maybe if staff writes in some of what's been suggested, and we have two to look at. So, I mean, we have the written comments that were presented tonight. We have my comments and Isaac's comments and Robin's. So, you know, if that can be highlighted as suggested changes, I don't know how else you do it. I don't think sending it on as it now exists, that there's a consensus that it would be. Be able to be voted on.
Okay. Ken? Where are you on this sidewalk policy?
I think with the suggestions given tonight. And what we have so far for policy. Putting those together, I'm in favor of it. So we should bring it up for action after we. Put those things together for December. Thank you.
Okay, so you're saying incorporate the changes that were proposed tonight, including Eileen's to take out the pavers. And asphalt and Isaac's about. Well, Isaac and Robin are at odds with theirs about new developments. So staff, you have quite a job here. Kathy?
Um, I'm, I'm. Still trying to wade through all of this. And a couple of comments. On, under the. On the very first page, under guiding policy principles. I'm kind of hung up on the item five where it says the ultimate goal of the city is to have sidewalks on all existing and future streets. I don't, where does the ultimate goal of the city come from? Is that? Has that? Is that a structure or is that a statement that's already there, or is that part of this policy? Are we making that statement with this policy? Or is this something that, that the city has been following all along? That is, it's a question. And then. There's, throughout the, the document. There's terms should, shall, and may. They all mean different things. And sometimes that's a little confusing is that. I'm, I'm not sure. The word shall. Fits with a policy. Doesn't that come more with an ordinance? And that might, if it's should or may be considered. Then if that fits with the ordinance, but. A policy, the way it was explained in our last meeting, is basically for internal use by staff within the guidelines of the ordinance, correct? So, so, so that where, I guess my question is, I think. If the staff could take a look at the should, shall, may, to make sure. It's cohesive and it's saying what it needs to say for it to fit the ordinance. And then. I know that, that the discussion has been for this not to include the, the industry park, but I come back. To if we're having a sidewalk policy and the industry park is brought up. Now, I, I would suggest that the Pedic board. Take a look at this and have some sort of a reaction so that. They have a basis to go on. In the event it ever comes back, there's an issue with, oh, well, I think we're going to have a new development. Now we need a sidewalk. Where did this come from? So just to clue in, Pedic. Because I know. There had, the Tiff district there is already challenged, and I'm assuming that that's where the sidewalks would come from, if and when it would ever happen. So I think that, and, and just in general. Where it comes back to my comment about the ultimate goal of the city. It's sort of. it's sort of maybe should be construed is ideally the city would like to see sidewalks because if this is going to come back to the council, every time a street construction comes up, it's going to come back to money. So, so how, that's where, if you can follow my train of thought for the, the should, shall, may piece of it. Because I, I guess I would like to see a, that a policy that the staff is able to work with when it comes time for a project. So that we're not going, they're not having to go back to the city council every single time. And it's clear, I realize that this is set up that there's, there's going to be exceptions, but a way to have a final document that cuts back on maybe the number of times that a decision would have to come from the council.
I, my take. I think the request for exception would have gone to staff anyway. I don't think it was designed to come to the council. Am I correct on that, Joe? Wasn't the request for exemption? It says to come to the council?
That's, that's the current policy is it goes to the council, but obviously this is going to be a guide for modifying the ordinances. So I guess that could be a clarification that's made when the ordinance is drafted.
Okay. Okay, so are you ready to see this then? Go to an action item with the change from the ultimate goal to ideally? And with inclusion with a section that includes industry park?
And the, the review of the should, shall, may to make sure that the same, same wording is used.
Okay.
Then the answer is yes.
Okay. Jason?
Um, so we've had a lot of conversations about this and a couple of things that stand up for me in terms of like the goals of this policy or kind of what we want to see out of this policy. And I think what I've heard consistently is connectivity connectivity for pedestrians in terms of having ways to get around town without having to use a motor vehicle. Safety. Having, you know, sidewalks provided as a safety for pedestrians. And then in terms of concerns, you know, definitely hearing that places that maybe don't make sense. Or, or I can, I can kind of see the, the concerns of where, you know, especially if we look at the goal of connectivity, if there's a subdivision that's kind of outside of town and, you know, it's not really connected to anything or there really isn't any future connectivity there. You know, I can see how that would be viewed as like, well, why would there, why would we spend the resources? Why would we put sidewalks in there? And I guess my thought is, is if we are focusing on the connectivity piece, you know, is there a way to look at those situations and, you know, can, can we do the, the payment in lieu of the sidewalk installation? Wouldn't be as much as, as what you would get for, for the cost of the sidewalk, but be able to then put those resources to a place in town where there is more of an opportunity to have that connectivity where, where, you know, it makes a little bit more sense in terms of, you know, again, looking at resources, what we're spending money on. Yeah, I, that's the piece that I struggle with because, you know, I'd hate to see again subdivisions that, you know, are kind of outside of the, the main city area that aren't necessarily connected, you know, getting sidewalks and resources and all of that. But then there are places in town that could be very beneficial, that could provide a lot more pedestrian options, kind of get passed by or, or resources not get put there. So I, I guess that's where I'm coming from in terms of, you know, trying to find a balance between those two instead of making, making it like across the board mandatory type of thing.
So Jason, let me try to re-say what I think, repeat what I think you said. I think you were talking about perhaps new development on the edge of town. And that rather than a developer putting in sidewalks, if in fact there was no connection, that, that developer would be asked to be, make a payment in lieu of sidewalk. And that payment in lieu of sidewalk would be used to connect sidewalks that are in town that are not connected or provide connections within the city. Is that what you said?
Kind, yeah, pretty much. I, I guess it's just looking at what is, what's the, again, the best rest use of resources, what makes sense in terms of, again, reaching that goal of, of having the connectivity, especially in places where it's really needed within town. And, and just, and again, looking at sidewalks being a prior, or, or kind of a, something that we want as a community is, is a priority for us. But I also feel like there should be, it should make sense in terms of that connectivity piece too.
Okay.
Barb, can I comment on that?
Sure, Joe.
Regarding that comment, that was actually one of the first ideas I had in my initial draft of this policy and I passed that concept along to the city attorney. And essentially that fee in lieu of would be considered from a legal standpoint, the same as an impact fee. So in order to do that, we would have to go through that impact fee statute, which requires the study to be done and you have to justify the cost of that and meet all the requirements in that particular statute. It sounded like it, it would be possible to do it. There's a one line in that statute that refers to other transportation services or facilities. But his knowledge, nobody's ever done an impact fee for a sidewalk specifically. So we would be kind of treading new ground to do that. But the initial part would require, you know, an impact fee study to achieve that, which is currently not in the budget. So that might be something we would have to look at some point in the future.
And Joe, do I recall that the estimate for that impact fee study is $75,000?
Well, I think that was actually for the, the transportation utility.
Transportation utility.
And that, that's kind of how we, we went away from the fee in lieu of towards the transportation utility because we thought that's a little bit more comprehensive. We could use it for other expenses, but I believe that number sounds about right.
May I?
Go ahead, Howard.
We were looking at potentially doing a transportation utility in two parts. One would be kind of an initial feasibility study for 15,000, give or take. You know, is this feasible? Is this a good thing for the city of Platteville? How, how badly will major traffic generators like the university and Walmart and school district? How much, how bad will they scream bloody murder if we try to bring something like this up? And then if the council accepts the preliminary study, then we could go into the more detailed analysis on, you know, how much exactly would it be for each property owner and, and stuff like that? And that would take the remainder of that 75. But we could do an initial fee, initial concept for a lot cheaper.
Okay, so the transfer to transportation utility is far more extensive. What you're talking about in a transportation utility is kind of like any other utility. Everybody in town gets assessed whether you're building or not.
Yes.
So it's, it's, which is a whole lot different than, than Jason was saying, which was if a new developer was coming in and was going to develop a subdivision in X area that was totally disconnected from anything in the city and probably wouldn't be connected for years, what would be the point of the sidewalks? And why couldn't that developer pay a payment in lieu of sidewalks? That could then be used to make sidewalks in areas of the city that need to be connected. Those are two different, to me, those are two very different approaches. Okay, staff, it appears that you've gotten a lot of input tonight. My input I provided, you, you have my input. It was the suggested changes in wording that were included. So I would ask the staff to, for the next meeting, to come back with a proposal that incorporates some of the things that you've heard tonight or places where you see changes could or might be made you know, to this policy based on that. You can do that through cross outs. We will put it on for not action at the next agenda, but we will put it on for discussion again. And I would suggest that you send it back when you have those changes. Suggested changes or modifications or whatever you might say, that you make sure that both the plan commission and the sidewalk committee, safer routes committee, get copies of that. Okay? All right. Let's go on then. We have a solid waste and recycling task force report. Is that you, Howard?
Yes. This task force was created to review alternatives for solid waste and recycling and look at cost effective alternatives for future contracts. We met on a number of occasions. One of the alternatives that was discussed and rejected was to convert to automated cart collection. What that would be is you would have special carts that you would have for solid waste and/or recycling contractor purchases, special truck with an arm that grabs the, the container and empties the container. It would in reduce costs in the long run because you could reduce personnel costs, but it increases costs in the near term for the carts and for the special trucks. Another alternative that was looked at was to move spring cleanup from May back to April. This would have what we would consider minimal impact to our owner occupied properties. Renters, especially student renters and their landlords would be severely impacted by this because right now those renters and their landlords take much advantage of using the spring cleanup to clean up their, their places. And have it charged to the city's taxpayers. You know, we do have a few renters who wait until after the spring cleanup to move out and deposit their waste and those are handled as enforcement actions. We believe that moving spring cleanup would probably increase the number of enforcement actions. Concurrently, Amy Seboth Wilson from over at the university noted that UW Milwaukee Hodes did a spring swap where you could do trading of furniture and other things. One of our thoughts was if we did this, that we could charge a modest fee to cover disposal of items that remained at the end. You know, what we're saying is let's do the swap, let's offer things to thrift shop or Goodwill. And then if nothing else, then, then we would have to pay for disposal costs. Based on all of the above, Fairdy Incorporated would like to accept a contract extension for calendar year 2021 with a 0% increase. And we recommend, the staff force recommends that we do that, we accept that. And they also made a motion two to one to move spring cleanup from May to April and a spring swap be hosted. We also believe that the task force should be extended at least through June 30th of next year to help plan coordinate the spring swap and review data from the spring cleanup. So looking at that budgetary impact, what they're, what they were saying is Fairdy says fall cleanup averages 149,000 pounds. Spring cleanup averages just under 300,000 pounds. The disposal costs that they pay for that extra weight is an additional $15,000. We've kind of calculated that out that out of the $130 or so that is charged for solid waste and recycling for the year, that additional weight accounts for about $4 to $5 per household out of that cost. So that would reduce future increases in that. So we've got a, a list of motions and, and everything for this. First off, moving the spring cleanup date, doing a spring swap. And then based on approved motions for those, then approving the contract extension for Fairdy. And then lastly, extending the task force till June of next year.
Okay. We'll make a round robin here of questions. And Robin, since you're on this task force, I'm going to start with you in terms of if there's anything you want to add, clarify, or say.
Yeah, one piece to kind of add to the comment you made about the volume in the spring. That was a comparison to other communities as well that it, all spring cleanups have a larger volume than the fall cleanup, but Platteville has a significant, significant and measurably noticeable volume that looks pretty cleanly attached to the number of college properties that we have. It's a definite tough conversation as it may create new burdens or on the landlords. That April date, I, I have a hard enough time getting my spring cleaning done. I know that there's some preferences to keep it where it's at and in the sense of timing, but also just with those college move outs. But it, I mean, just to note, it's been hard to see the couches sitting out there when we have graduation weekend, you know, that that is timed with the other activities that are going on, garbage or garage sales and, and graduation, et cetera, that bring people to our community, but you still have this garbage collecting on the curb side. So that, that it would be done in April and then tenants are going to have to use this swap or communicate with their landlords how they're going to get rid of that property. I was one that spoke for, I would rather we pay wages to citizens than buy machines. I, I know ultimately budgets are important for us to consider the, the long-term bottom line impact, but there was a lot of considerations with Fairdies and whether they were really motivated to move into that system quite yet anyhow. But I would rather if it's system quite yet anyhow. But I would rather if it's, you know, close for consideration for us to not remove people's positions just to buy robots. So that was part of the discussion as well. I just want to thank Farities for their really taking the citizens' dollar into account as they're having this discussion. And it was a complicated year with COVID. They brought this conversation to us because of the recycling industry not being as profitable and it really affecting their bottom line. And this is a complicated year, but they seem to want to help us maintain a steady budget. And their one ask most significantly was if the citywide cleanup could be adjusted, that's where they feel they could absorb that cost, you know, that they could manage maintaining the budget. So I know it's probably the hardest ask, but it was probably a significant piece to that consideration. I think that's all.
Okay, thank you, Robin. Jason, comments, questions?
Um, in terms of the April 12th date, what, was there any significance to that in, in terms of that being the proposed date to move it to?
It was basically the middle of May, middle of April versus the middle of May, just.
Okay. So there really wasn't any?
I mean, it could be, it could be a week one way or the other. That was just the tentative date to shoot for.
Okay.
In 2021, but 2022 it would change.
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, my biggest concern is, you know, definitely that weekend or, or that week leading up to the spring cleanup especially. There, there are some pretty huge piles on the sides of some of the, the properties in Platteville. And the other thing that I noticed too is that sometimes there's still, there, there's a lot of things that don't get taken either. So then that stuff, there's a lot of stuff that sits even longer. So I'm assuming that's probably more of the, the code enforcement thing, but I don't know if there is a way to like, I, I'm assuming there's probably limits as to how much you can put out. I don't know if there's any way to kind of strengthen that message or, or kind of get that out there of like, you can't put like five couches out or, you know, just these huge piles of things on, on the side of the roads. I wonder if there's any way to, to kind of, yeah, get that message out a little bit more in terms of those limits. In terms of moving it. Yeah, I don't know. I have I'd have to think about that a little bit more in terms of getting some more feedback. But yeah, I think the biggest thing is just the, the amount of stuff that gets put out and and just making sure that, that there is a little bit more adherence to, to some of those limits.
Okay, thank you. Kathy?
Okay, um, number one, I think this is a fantastic topic. I have no, I, I totally agree with Robin about wanting the local jobs. I also have seen those trucks in Madison. And they take up a little more room to actually have the arm to come over. And we may have some streets that are just pretty narrow to do that. I'm not in favor of doing that. I have had 35 years of experience as a landlord in the city of Platteville. And over those 35 years, I have had dozens and dozens and dozens of students. And I think the idea of doing a swap, fantastic idea. But I think the, the, the key to this while it's, it's, I don't want the landlords to take a hit with this. I think it needs to be, I was always a proponent of educating the tenant. And over the years, I think the, the, the momentum has, has gotten to the point where students know that when they're leaving for the last time, hey, we can just throw everything out. They're going to pick it up. So if we come back, figure out how to scale that back and put it in some sort of an education piece that we can work between the landlords and the tenants. I think it's a mindset that, I mean, you know, when, when you move, I haven't moved from Platteville forever, but if I was going to move from Platteville to Madison, the last thing on my mind that I would think about doing would be putting, you know, two semi loads of junk at the curb. So I think it's a, it's a teaching moment too for, you know, students that are, are leaving school. You don't just get to dump everything. And, and I think that if we would work towards doing that, working with the landlords. I know as a landlord, I was horrified about the amount of stuff that would be, that would get put at the curb, especially during commencement weekend. I was embarrassed when those parents would come to town. So I think there would be a lot of potential for working in a very positive way with landlords because I couldn't be the only one that didn't want to see that. But again, I think it's a mindset that every spring, every spring, when the students leave, they, they just know it's part of the culture here. You just get to dump everything at the curb. I'd say just nip it and figure out a way and with this, the environmental initiatives that are out there, I can't help but think that they wouldn't buy into that, that swap weekend or week or whatever with the university. I think that would be a really cool program for the, the city of Platteville to get involved in and see, see what we can make happen with that. But I, I don't have an issue really of moving the date up till April. When I do my spring cleaning, if I have one or two things that I take out, I mean, it's, 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 you know. So.
Okay. All right. Ken?
Well, I agree with trying to do the swap. I think that doing the swap in April, there's still going to be a number of items coming later after the swap has been accomplished, after it has been done. And I also agree with Kathy that the landlord is going to have to be informed about the fact that students need to be taking care of their garbage. Their, their stuff that they throw out and a landlord has to do more action as far as ensuring that he gets, he, she gets enough money to pay for the pickup of the items that are left by students at the end. This is not a free program. And landlords need to be more informed, inform the students about it. So that there's going to be less work at the end.
Okay. Eileen?
First question, Howard, this citywide cleanup, spring and fall, is only for single family and duplexes. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So if you have a triplex, which I do, you are not partaking in the free pickup. Just so everybody's aware of that because it's not citywide in the sense that we use it. So if you're do, or if you're a multi-unit, it's not available to you. Normally you would have a dumpster anyway, I guess, but so that's the first thing I would want to say. I also am a landlord and one of the things I have learned over the years is never to let any students leave anything behind because the next group will take them. Because the next group never really wants them. And then when they leave, they say they aren't mine. They belong to the other guys. So it's important to have a, a way to stress to your renters that, you know, if you don't want this, you have to remove it from the property. I would probably advocate instead for doing the pickup later in May in conjunction with the idea of the swap. Because doing it in April, I don't think you're going to get that many people putting things out. They've got a whole month of school left or they've got finals. That's all that's on their mind at that point. So I think April's really early to try to do this. I realize we're trying to avoid having a lot of weight for Farities to pick up because that's what's costing money. So I think addressing that in another way, the swap, I'm curious about it. One of the other stumbling blocks for renters in my experience has been that if they have a couch, they have no way to move it. They don't have a truck. Now, I guess they could rent a truck. But I think there are a lot of factors as to why students just literally put everything on the curb. If they're allowed to do it, if they live in a duplex or a single family home. But I, I'd be curious to see what the university comes up with for ideas as to how students will get things on campus and, and what timeline the university really thinks they need to make it a successful swap. I'm not sure if you can wait until the end of the semester, if you had to do it in April. So I'm not saying I'm for or against it at this point. I'm just really curious as to how that would actually work and how that would benefit the students in the long run.
Isaac?
Well, I guess one thing I would agree with what Robin stated about the, the automation, which, you know, in the long run would save money on the city and for the taxpayers. But and again, we're, you know, we're a deal here where we're trying to, to create jobs for people and see, see more jobs. And also we're going to do this. And also we're going to probably lose some jobs. And I'm not saying it would happen or not, but so I would not be in favor of that goal just for the fact of, you know, possible employment loss. As for the move update or the moving of the date for the spring cleanup, again, as a landlord myself here in town, the April 20, or the April 12th would just be too early. Again, you're going to pass that cost on to the tenants, which if they don't do it, then it goes to the landlord. So I would, I would think May 1st or the beginning of the month. You know, they've only got a few days, majority of them here are only here until graduation and then they leave. So but the day could be moved, you know, we just worked out the exact date that, so that you would agree to put it on. Again, I'd have to comment and applaud Farities for their, you know, their willingness to keep working with this and trying to keep their costs down as well as, you know, keeping people employed here. So that's all I have.
Okay, well, my, my feeling is that to get people to comply, to get people to change their behavior, you have to make some radical changes. And so Kathy, I, I, I agree with you that there should be some education here. I mean, I've looked at the couches that come out of those houses and think, I don't think all those couches were in those houses in the first place. I think these people are bringing in couches from home that parents want to get rid of. And so all of a sudden it's like, hey, we can take that piece of junk that you have at home to Platteville and we'll put it on the curb and they'll take it away. So I, I think a radical departure from date. And whether it's April 15th or April 20th, I would really favor an April date. And in fact, I think Farities have indicated that the only way they can realize a cost savings is if the poundage decreases. Otherwise, they're going to have to raise their rate. So I, I feel we're caught between, how, how do we get this poundage down? And so I was a little confused, Howard, when you said we would have a swap. Who is we and who is organizing this swap? Because I would hate to see this be 10 city employees who are now organizing a swap. So who is we? And where is where? In terms of this swap?
Still to be determined. It's mainly going to be on or at the university is where, where we're looking at, working with Amy. You know, her thoughts were that it would be mainly student run. You know, student positions, student volunteers, student whatever, doing this. Now, at the very end, there will be some residual stuff that isn't swapped and is in too bad a condition to go to Goodwill or, or Thrift Shop or wherever, and that will have to be disposed of. That would likely end up being at city cost. And that's why I'm recommending, hey, we establish some sort of a modest fee to do this to help defray that cost at the very end. But yes, it, it needs to be on campus and mainly run by campus and students.
And I have a feeling if I have to pay a fee to bring my stuff to campus versus I don't have to pay a fee at all to put it on the curb, I'm probably not going to bring it to camp. Just thinking. Yeah, I, I understand the difficulty with the the earlier date. And I understand the, the strain that that puts on people who are renting to others. I also though, believe that there's been a strain been put on the rest of Platteville to carry that burden. So I really, I, I'm supportive of this concept. Okay. I guess that's where we are with that. Resolution, I guess we move to the next one. Resolution 2021 fee schedule.
So Candace was not able to be with us tonight. This was her item, but I can present it on her behalf. So every year we review, the department directors review the fee schedule to make any adjustments that need to be made. And you can see here in the staff note that there are some suggestions to change the current fee schedule. The addition of a dog groom and license fee of $35. And also moving the background check fee to make it easier to see. Page eight, removed all fees for the 2021 year. And removed circulating laptops as they are no longer available. On page nine, cleanup of the layout for general admissions for the museum and addition of the following group tours, adult $8, group tour senior $6.80 and some various in person and virtual programs. Page 10, Brasky Event Center fees increasing from $5 to $10 also for sewer dump water and or electricity for campground fees. And then on page 15, the addition of downtown reserved parking fees that were not included previously. So those are the suggested fee changes. If you have questions on any of those, I think all of the department directors are here and could, and could answer those.
Okay, questions on fee changes? Eileen? No questions. Robin?
Nope, no questions. I was just looking up one and I figured it out. Thank you.
Kathy?
No, I don't have any questions, but it's just an observation. I was actually surprised to see that we have a bike license requirement. And we also have a dog license requirement. How many people have registered their bikes or registered their dogs? Is that none? Couple? Couple? Do people aware of it?
So there uh. So let's talk about dog licenses briefly, um, since it's getting late. It is something that is required um, by, I believe, state statute. And we uh, we do have um, some portion of the population that diligently licenses their dogs. If a dog is at large um, and is not licensed, then um, then there is uh. A recommendation and a requirement that that dog become licensed. Uh, but this would be one of those things. And if you'll forgive me for making a bit of a pitch here, but these are the kinds of things that staff cannot sometimes get to. I'll be and that they, they get pushed a little further down the priority list, especially. Um, in years like this one. And uh, and so, yeah, as we juggle. Maintaining um. A constrained budget with the various, you know, aspects of um. Of uh, city governance. Um, sometimes there are some things that we can't attend to in quite the way that we'd like to. And dog licensing fees is one of those. We would, we would like to have a more comprehensive approach. To dog licensing, um, try to encourage it, promote it, market it. Incentivize it, uh, but, uh, but that's something that may be uh. An, an objective for a future year.
I would, I would say that that could. I would strongly suggest even putting that, that kind of a notice in a water bill. I mean, the, if, just for general information, by the way, did you know that if you have a dog? This is where, how you get a license. I think we might be surprised at how many people would. Would do it if they knew they were supposed to without it being heavy handed. I guess.
Kathy, I agree with you. I have property in two other municipalities. And in both of those municipalities with my tax bill. I get information about dog licensing. And the application and I for the life of me cannot figure out why we don't do that here. It's right in my tax bill every year. I don't have a dog there, but I sure would know I have to have a license if I did. So I agree. Whether it's the water bill or whether it's the. The property tax bill, I don't see any reason we're not making information available about that.
I'm on it.
That's been a topic I've discussed a couple of times too, that I, as someone who just simply forgets. Would love for an electronic payment option. I would love for that to just, once somebody's registered once, there's an annual email reminder with a link to pay that. Right there in that one sitting. So. I think we might see a lot more compliance if it was just way more convenient. Also, as someone who has gone up to the. Counter at the thrift shop and begged for a bike back that my kid noticed was theirs that had been missing for a while. Uh, the police department would really appreciate us registering our bikes so that they can track down the owners when those bikes go missing. So. Again, something I have not done because it hasn't been in my face convenient, um, but I was lucky enough to have. Kind people at the thrift shop give my kid their bike back after it sat at the cop shop for a while. So. Yeah, just an interesting thing that's out there that I think people would comply if it was just more convenient.
I'm sure our new $17,500 expenditure for financial software will help us get there, right, Adam?
Bingo.
All right, Jason. Fees and the fee schedule. Any questions or comments?
No.
Questions?
Okay, my question is on um. Background check fee. Explanation, what is that for? What are you checking? $7.
So I believe that that is associated with um, license applications. License to serve or sell alcohol. And there was a background fee associated with that. And there may be other areas in which. There's a background fee. A background check that's required. And so there's a fee associated with that.
So that's for alcohol.
That would be one uh, application that I'm aware of where a background check is required. There may be others, maybe Doug can jump in and.
Well, can you do a background check for $7? Seems pretty cheap.
That is the actual cost here.
And Kalen, is it for more than licensing bartenders?
Um, there is also taxi driver. But yeah, our alcohol licensing, operator licensing, you know.
Well, I'm curious what a background check consists of.
Kalen, do you want to handle it? What does it consist of? Of looking at the uh.
Your police record?
Right, right.
It looks at police record and to see if they have a criminal record.
Okay, Ken.
Are you getting a nationwide check, Wisconsin check or platform check?
Primarily just a Wisconsin and local check.
Okay, so you're not getting a very wide check. Thank you.
Okay, Isaac, fee schedule.
None.
Okay. Then we'll expect to see that go forward for next. Uh, we'll move on to item E, which is CARES funding breakdown. So.
Yeah. So, well, Nicola and I can take team this one, but we'll also kind of, so this kind of goes into Robin's question about kind of a COVID-19 update. So obviously. You know, one of the big items that was kind of completed uh, in the month of November was related to the CARES funding. So. Just to kind of um, remind the council what that entailed is, uh, there was essentially $200 million in federal coronavirus aid relief and economic securities. Or CARES Act dollars uh, that was allocated to various states to kind of basically distribute to municipalities. So. Platinum was allocated uh, $204,341. Then to receive the allocation, uh, grantees were required to report. Eligible expenditures for reimbursements through the program's online expense reporter. Uh, guidance on the qualifying expenditures were received from both the state and federal government and updates to the guidance and qualifiers were provided throughout the year. Um, a significant federal interpretation of the act was that all wages and fringe benefit costs of public safety personnel. For the grant period of March through November, uh, was eligible for submission. Uh, so basically we were able to. Offer the city, this included the police, fire and EMS personnel expenses. So our finance department were diligently submitting eligible expenses in the amount of actually that was over 1.4 million dollars. Um, so this just kind of goes to show you, we were allocated $204,341. Uh, but we've been tracking, you know, since kind of March, uh, the amount of time that staff has been spending on this. Obviously, some of the costs we have related to. Um, you know, Zoom accounts, different things like that, uh, PPE that had to be purchased. Um, and obviously have had about over, you know, 1.4 million dollars, which is primarily um, employee cost time. Uh, not technically, you know, out of budgeted time, but definitely, um, you know, the issue there is that time that normally would have been spent on. It's kind of Nicola's indicated, working on, you know, priorities within the departments has been spent on, uh, you know, COVID-19 related issues. Um, you know, a lot of HR, FMLA type uh, actions, different things like that. So. Obviously, both Director Maurer and I would like to thank all of the city staff members who assisted in tracking their eligible expenditures and specifically the finance department. Uh, for their diligence and ensuring the information was uploaded correctly to the Department of Administration. Uh, we did receive confirmation on November 18th that our submission was received by the state. Um, so now what we're kind of waiting on is there's been some uh, question or some conversations about. Those municipalities that obviously had expenditures that exceeded their allotment, um, and those that didn't. Uh, potentially, there may be the opportunity to get some of those increased funds or, you know, this information is going to be used essentially as kind of a. You know, opportunity to reach out to our state and obviously uh, federal, um, you know, senators and representatives. As to, you know, the impacts that uh, COVID-19 really has had on municipalities for potentially. Uh, the next stimulus package, there's been talk, if there is going to be another stimulus package. That potentially there could be some funding for uh, local and state municipalities. To kind of hit, hit about uh, not only the expenditures, but the revenues. So. One of the other things that obviously was included in this summary is just kind of a rundown of. You know, some of the, and obviously this was touched a lot in the budget, but the particular areas that we're seeing. Uh, you know, definite revenue impacts related to COVID-19. And primarily that's been with the local room tax. Um, you know, our building inspector permits, our court penalties and costs, parking violations, um, the interest in the general fund. Uh, you know, our museum tour admission and then obviously with our pool, uh, the daily admission in the season passes. So. You know, looking at the, what was projected in the budget for 2020 was those, uh, you know, particular account details. Were supposed to, you know, bring in about a little, you know, about $585,000. Um, and as of, you know, October 31st, we've only taken in about 302 in those particular line items. So that's only about 52%. Of what those budgeted items were thinking of. So. That potentially puts about an estimated loss of anywhere but, you know, about 237. And so reviewing our financials, you know, we've been forecasting as we've been going on this year about uh, 250 to $300,000 reduction. Uh, which definitely is less than what we originally thought it was going to be as we presented this kind of the last time. And you know, what we're looking at right now is we anticipate that with the uh, reductions that we did to expenditures. That we're potentially going to have a surplus balance at the end of the year. Uh, through reductions and expenditures and obviously several sources of COVID-19 grant support. So that's just kind of the quick rundown of, of everything related to the CARES. Um, to kind of give you a COVID-19 update. As Robin indicated, you know, the, the library reached out to uh, Grant County, you know, the health department. About um, what they should do in regards to, you know, with the governor's executive order now really um. Limiting or asking to limit uh, the amount of interactions between people that aren't of your family. Um, you know, they have been averaging, you know, they still average about 40 to, to 50 people that, that surface the library, you know, about every hour. Um, so some of the concerns obviously is with the increased numbers that they're seeing, um, looking at going to a reduced uh, service level. Um, in regards to still providing curbside pickup, um, you know, having an appointment schedule for uh, you know, if you want to use the computers. And then the staff will be working with people that they can call, you can obviously call their staff and they'll work to kind of browse the sections for you. So. Um, that decision uh, essentially is something that is anticipated to go into effect after Thanksgiving. And then as Robin indicated, the library board is planning to meet uh, on December 2nd to kind of officially approve that plan. You know, obviously, some of the, the comments that, um, you know, we have discussed with that is ensuring that. We're really doing kind of our due diligence to get in front of what our employees are doing. Um, even if we do have buildings that are reduced or, or closed. Um, because obviously that's a concern that, uh, you know, I've heard from taxpayers and I've heard from people that. Well, if the building's closed, you know, how can you still have the same service level or how can you still have the same employees? So. That's something obviously that, um, you know, the library has, uh, is definitely aware of and is looking at all the different programming that they can do. You know, Nicola and I continue to kind of review, um, you know, one of the big concerns obviously coming up here is with tax payments. Um, and there's the concern, I've been on numerous calls with municipalities about, you know, with. Does it make sense to go back to an appointment only? That's going to be difficult, obviously, with tax payments because when you're dealing with, you know, somebody that may have a check for. You know, any amount of money, they may not feel comfortable just dropping that off in a drop box. So. Um, some of the things that we obviously have talked about with staff is how we ensure that uh, the staff that are working on that are safe. Or as safe as possible, um, and that we're continuing to obviously monitor those that would be considered high risk. So. Some of the things we're obviously looking at is with the tax bills going out, um, providing as much information as possible about. All the different ways that you can submit your tax bill without having to come into city hall. Um, and then really trying to look at ways of advocating, uh, you know, specifically. Either setting up appointments or calling in advance. Or potentially, if you're coming in, we may also look at using the former uh, finance location. As a, as a place where some of the staff can go and take somebody that wants to make their tax payment and physically do it um, to do so. So. Uh, those are the things that obviously we continue to kind of monitor here on a regular basis. Obviously, on all the calls that I'm on, you know, they continue to talk about uh, some of the unknowns, which is obviously the testing. Uh, with UW Platteville, it's uh, you know, currently is a six week trial period. Um, you know, we'll see what happens with that after the six weeks. If, you know, there's enough data that they want to continue that or there's additional funding for that. Uh, but otherwise, the primary conversations right now have been that the uh, um, you know, Grant County will then kind of re-step in. After UW Platteville has completed their testing and look at, you know, trying to find ways to advocate for that testing to occur. That's the short version.
Okay, questions from anyone on uh. CARES funding or COVID? Eileen.
No question.
Robin.
I just wanted to mostly um, kind of address the idea that our numbers are not good and. That what we did in March or April to help assure that staff were healthy. And able to manage their workload um, at home or an alternate uh, situation so that they weren't having to sit in shared office spaces or be exposed. To the public without feeling safe. I know we've taken precautions that allowed us to open up a bit more, but I just wonder as our numbers are what they are and are. Likely to be. If we are giving serious conversation um, to whether we need to step back. And just assuring that staff across. Every department feel safe coming to work, uh, or feel supported in making those alternate. Plans um, that may be needed as schools. Have to close or, you know, all of that that we were sensitive to early on, but everyone kind of. Has fatigued yet now is the time that we're really having to deal with it. So. As it's real in our community now, uh, knowing people that have passed away or getting positive cases. I think we just need to be. Uh, cognizant of how hard it is for people to show up to work. And managing a workload while dealing with all of those anxieties. Is a lot to balance. And so understanding that. The taxpayer wants to know that they're getting their dollars worth out of city staff. It's also important to know that we need to just maintain staff in those positions. In a way that they feel supported and make it through COVID. Um, and we still have a solid staff when we are. Back to normal functioning. So. I understand answering those questions about. You know, what are they doing? Um, but it's important that we as. Supervisors of those positions say, yep, we've discussed what they need to be doing and they're doing that. I'm sorry, you're not able to see their face in the office, but. We're needing to make sure that they're still healthy enough to do the job next week, even if it's remote. So. I just want to kind of reinforce that to supervisors and department heads that. Hopefully they're feeling supported and if not. Maybe we need to look at that, but. Not speaking from particular complaints, um, I know it was a tough decision for the library, but I am not abreast to all of the other departments. Um, and what's happening there, but I just wanted to. Thank city personnel for what they're doing. I know it's hard being on the front lines. I'm there, so. Stay well, everyone, yes.
Yep. Okay, Kathy.
Um. I, I just have um. A comment slash question, Adam, um, when you. You have the operating budget and the effect of COVID-19. I have a question about the local room tax. That is an interesting thing because. The chamber as the tourism entity. Um, was able to write a grant. To the, through, through the CARES Act, through the Department of Tourism. And I, I know that explicitly because I wrote the grant for them. But so they were able and it was been approved, but it wasn't. But so they were able, and it was been approved, but it wasn't for the full amount of the loss. But so I don't know how that factors back to the city. So maybe we need to chat and I can share those numbers with you or something. But I, I guess I would just be concerned to submit this as, as looking like a loss when actually the tourism entity wrote a grant to cover part of the loss from this room tax that they got from the city. A little confusing.
Yeah, and that could, and that could be. So obviously, that would stay with, that would stay with the chamber. So ours is basically just on the, so we budgeted, you know, assuming we would get $160,000 and then that's a 70, I think it's a 70, 30 split, where normally 70 of that goes to the chamber and then 30 stays with the city. So that's where, yeah, I think in the, in the overall end results, if that, you know, if you want to share that information, I'll definitely put that into kind of the, the total picture when we
Because I, I, I think for transparency, that would be a good idea, especially because we have the numbers.
For sure.
Okay.
Jason?
Um, I would just kind of echo what Robin was saying in terms of, you know, making sure that people feel comfortable and safe coming into work. And, and the, the part of the, the comment made about, you know, where, where are the tax files going? Or, you know, what, what work is being done, I think is frustrating, especially on top of, you know, all of the other stress that this virus, this pandemic has caused to, to have that anxiety of, you know, going into work with that risk and then to have your work ethic challenged on top of that, I think is, is pretty frustrating. And I know earlier in the summer, when the school district was making decisions too, there were some comments, you know, being made about the work ethic of teachers and, you know, them wanting to advocate for their safety in terms of, of teaching. So I guess that part of it, you know, is, is just frustrating. So.
No comments.
Isaac?
No comments.
The only comment I would make, you, you mentioned quite a bit. I do know that you have also developed a snow plowing alternative kind of schedule. One of the things that we have to always be mindful of is that we have services that we'll need to deliver, but we may have staff who can't deliver them. So I think Adam and Howard will likely share their plan. Adam, I've asked Adam to share it in a staff note later when they kind of polish it up. And so that you know that, I mean, there, there's all kinds of planning going on in City Hall that would otherwise not be going on. I mean, you don't, you don't plan for eight people to be gone. But look, we're not playing football this weekend against Minnesota because there's too many football players that can't play. So and we don't want that happening in Platteville. Okay, that kind of takes care of the CARES funding breakdown. Inclusivity, diversity, and equity. Quick update, Adam?
Yeah, so obviously, we have the application or kind of letter requests out to the public. So we will continue to, you know, kind of ask for those and keep that going. I did meet with a university class, all of that, and the next kind of inclusivity update about presenting about everything the city is kind of doing. I think you guys saw that in the weekly update I provided. But obviously, at that class, I advertised, you know, and advocated for those interested to please sign up. So we'll kind of see where that's going. Again, we have Jamie Collins scheduled in January for the two sessions. So we'll keep talking about that. And then both Chief McKinley and I now have December 10th on our schedule. Will be our first bias reporting meeting, which is kind of the new joint effort between the university, you know, the city and the school district to kind of review potential incidents and start kind of, you know, getting some thought processes going and how we can analyze some data between the three. So those continue to kind of be the big three as long as, as well as, you know, I continue to meet with other administrators who are going to be working with a couple of different kind of inclusivity, diversity, and equity groups over next year on trying to figure out trainings that potentially can be done, not only for us as managers, but also to bring back to the staff. So more to come.
Okay. And we're almost at the end. First of all, I want to thank you all for your patience. I would also ask you and remind you that I have sent a couple of weeks ago the city manager performance evaluation document. And I resent it today. I have begun to receive them. We will be scheduling a closed session for the next meeting, December 8th, to talk about that evaluation. So in order for me, I, there's a spreadsheet that gets developed. In order for me to get all that info into the spreadsheet, I need to have your stuff sooner than later, especially if you're making lots of comments, because I type those all over so everybody can see all the comments too. So you can post to me, you can put them in an envelope and mail them. You can put them in a PDF and send them. You can, you know, if you, I, I dropped off an evaluation form at Ken's. If he wants me to pick it up, I'll pick it up. But let's figure out a way to get these all in so that we can have a full discussion on the 8th. And with that, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Well, finishing that, you're going to be around tomorrow so I can drop mine off?
I am going to be around tomorrow.
What time?
All day.
Well, good. At the back door, huh?
At the, at the, actually at the front door. Yep, I'll be around all day. And if I'm not here, Ken, there's a, there's a place on my front porch to put stuff.
What's your front porch?
What's my front porch?
Does it face Preston Drive?
It certainly does.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Proceed.
Okay. So I'm calling for a motion to adjourn. Okay, I hear Ken and Kathy. Ken makes the motion. Kathy seconds to adjourn. I, Kalen, I guess, give the vote. I don't know why. I think we should just adjourn, but yes, I'm first.
Doss.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Shanley.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Top.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Hey. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening and a happy Thanksgiving.
You as well.